Good morning. Let's call the meeting to order. The meeting is Pennington County Planning Commission, January 23, 2023. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on February 7, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are located in the back of the room, and those will be used during the meeting. So anyone that would like to speak on an item, if you are not the applicant, you'll want to fill out a speaker request form. Let's go through roll call. Jim did notify that he wasn't going to be here over a medical matter in the family. Everyone else is here. Harley is unrepresented today, of course, is Deb. We've got approval of minutes. Do members have a chance to sit down and read the minutes from the last meeting? Chair to address a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the minutes from the December 12, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission. Any discussion? From the audience? From the Commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. The agenda, everybody get their copy of the agenda either through the Internet or from the office. And have you had a chance to review it? Chair to address a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the agenda. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're on to the consent agenda. Brittany?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1231 for Nina McBride to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a single-family residence in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1231 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1401 for PLM Investments LLC, Mary Elris, to review a single wide mobile home as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1401 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 1842 for Keith and Sandra Lautner to review a home occupation in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1842 with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review CU 1918 for Perry and Vicky Van Newkirk to review a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1918 with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review CU 1929 for Chad and Nancy Reber to review a contractor's equipment storage yard in an agriculture district, and staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 1929 as the use has ceased for more than one year. Item number eight is conditional use permit review CU 2114 for Greg and Amy Wilson to review a cabin which is less than 20 feet wide in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 2114 with conditions. Item number nine is conditional use permit review CU 2115 for Quentin and Sherry Strand to review a garage as a primary structure in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 2115 with conditions. Item number 10 is conditional use permit review CU 2143 for Kenneth and Karen Wilson to review a multifamily dwelling in an agriculture district, and staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 2143 with the applicant's concurrence. Item number 11 is conditional use permit review CU 2228 for Michael and Renee Myers to review a guest house in a shop in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 2228 with conditions. And item number 12 is minor plan unit development amendment review PU 1712 for Jeremy Cummins, Lonnie Tunks, to review a gunsmithing business in a planned unit development, and staff recommends to end minor plan unit development amendment PU 1712.
Thank you, Brittany. Does staff have anyone they would like to have pulled?
Yes, item number seven, please.
Item number seven will be pulled. Commission, first thing would be, do you have any clerical errors that, in your review, that you would care to note at this time? If not, then would you desire to have any items pulled?
Number six.
Number six. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience that would desire to have any one of these pulled because we do act on them as a package? Thank you. Okay. Chair will address a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with item number six, item number seven pulled.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I don't know if you guys can hear us. We're on Zoom. It's Chris and Kristy Fellerman.
Yes.
And we were supposed to be on the agenda today for a CUP, and our name was not called.
You'll be next after the reviews.
Okay, so that still is coming up then.
Yes, ma'am. We're on the consent agenda, which is the first 12 items. I believe you're item number 14.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Anybody got any discussion on the motion before we approve? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number six.
Number six. I know where this is. I have no problem. Everything looks cool. You've got a picture of the house. What's the bottom one? Looks like a cemetery. What is that?
Good morning, Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner. That's actually a fire pit. So it's the three logs sitting on around the grate, so.
That's fine. I got, look, I thought, now, wait a minute. It's got little crosses around the edges and everything, but this does not look right. Okay, that's all I've got. Other than that, that's fine. Thank you.
Chair would address a motion to approve item number six on the agenda, which is conditional use permit 19-18 per staff's recommendation.
I move we approve conditional use permit CU 19-18 per staff's recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item number six, CU 19-18 per staff's recommendation. Discussion? Anyone from the audience that wants to discuss this matter? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number seven.
Good morning, Kelsey Rauch, Planning Department. Item number seven, CU 19-29. See, conditional use permit review for Chad and Nancy Reber. I have been trying to get in touch with them for a few months. According to, so originally, this property is located at 4400 North Elkville Road. In 2019, they got this conditional use permit to allow them to use this structure to house their garage, or garbage business. They owned Reber Sanitation. There was complaints from the neighbors that they were making noise in the mornings backing up, so they ended up getting this conditional use permit to house the garbage trucks. Not very long after that, they actually sold the business, and we brought this up for review. They wanted to find a different company to be able to use this building. So it's been a couple of years since they've sold the business. They, I mean, from the outside, everything looks clean. It's nice looking. I've been trying to be in touch with them. I've called multiple times. I finally, you know, got in touch with her in the last two weeks. Supposedly, they have multiple businesses that they're storing things in this building for, the majority of which is for a racing business. Her son has a racing business. They also said that they store items in there for a construction business that he owns. I have not been able to do an in-person, like, site visit in the building to see what's going on. I told her she needed to come to the meeting today. I don't think she's here. If I've been recommending to end this, she said she still wants to keep it because they want, this coming summer, they want to house larger construction equipment outside. I think at this point, I told her that I would continue it for two weeks for this meeting, until the next meeting, and then I told her I needed to do a site visit. I need to see inside the garage to see what's actually being stored. I told her she needed to come to the meeting, but maybe she forgot. I don't know. At this point, I think we can continue it for two weeks, and allow me to do a site visit with her and meet with her in person to see their, if they have concrete plans. And then if not, next meeting, if she can come to the meeting, she can tell us their plans in person, and then if we don't think it's sufficient to need a conditional use permit, then at that point, we can end it.
Questions for Kelsey? I have. The uses that are possible, in other words, they obviously want to take and make this a commercial piece of property. They lease or rent, and they're going to have to do whatever that involves maybe access to all sorts of things. We would review some of the uses, but some of the uses would fall under the same one. Do they understand that?
I'm not sure if she understands. I think to her, getting rid of this conditional use permit is like, oh, we can't use the building anymore. I'm like, with a racing business, she's just basically housing a car and a lot of materials for that car. So in our eyes, they don't need a conditional use permit for that use.
Yeah, they're not selling parts.
If they are going to start storing things outdoors, then maybe then we would need to leave this conditional use permit in place just to keep the neighbors happy. But it's zoned egg. I mean, there's a lot of uses they can use this building for other than contractor storage, so.
Then answers it. I'm in favor of giving Kelsey what she needs, two weeks, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to put it on hold for two weeks.
Continue it for two weeks?
Yes, sir.
What's the date of that meeting, Chair?
February 13.
Let's have that in the.
Second.
Continue till February 13.
Thank you.
Conditional use permit CU 19-29.
Has been moved and seconded to continue CU 19-29 for two weeks or the February 13 meeting of the Commission. Discussion? Anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Kelsey. Now we're on to item number 12, I believe.
13.
13.
13. Yes. All right. Thank you.
Megan Telmich, Planner. Agenda item 13 is conditional use permit 22-53 is to allow home occupation to allow for Internet phone or R sales on a subject property. The applicant is Bernard Von Burrows, and the landowner is Jennifer Williamson, both residing at 1400 Sheridan Lake Road. The location is 14, 14,000 Sheridan Lake Road, and lot size is .86 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district, and the existing land use is residential. The access is off of Sheridan Lake Road, and there is no flood hazard on the property. The onsite wastewater treatment system for the subject property is currently designed for a three-bedroom residence, and the current residence is five bedrooms according to both Department of Equalization and the applicant. And staff recommends that conditional use permit 22-53 be denied without prejudice due to insufficient utilities.
I was trying to do a little housekeeping here.
Yeah.
Great. Excuse me.
That is all for me.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Megan?
Is that the only issue, the septic tank and that whole thing?
Yes.
What would be the additional use of the septic tank versus?
For this home, for this home occupation, there wouldn't be any additional use, or any additional uses for the septic tank or, yeah.
So the concern is the way the septic tank is recorded?
Sorry, what?
So the concern of the utilities is the way the septic tank is recorded? What is the utility concern? That's my question.
The septic tank is undersized. It's sized for three bedrooms, and the residence has five bedrooms, and there's not a current operating permit on the septic tank.
Any other questions for Megan?
Valid operating license, is that for firearms or is it for the wastewater, is what you're talking about?
That's for the wastewater.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Were those extra two bedrooms added after, without a building permit, or how did we get this discrepancy in size?
Sorry. I'm not sure exactly when the extra two bedrooms were added, but the original building permit has the garage and the main house separate from each other. At one point, they were connected, and there was a bedroom put above the garage. So if it was built before, the original building permit was from 1989, and if it was built before '92, I'm not exactly sure.
Megan, your department, because we only have limited, what would I say, enforcement capability, basically uses this as a way to clean up some of the actions that you would have to go out and enforce. In other words, this would be one of them.
Yes.
But we're hoping that the person will go ahead and act and get it straightened out, and then, and then pursue, proceed with what they're requesting. We certainly have no question that they have a right to request a CUP on this. There isn't any other way to do it, is there, Brittany?
Well, just for a point of clarification, our ordinance does require if you apply for a CUP that your septic, because we consider it a change in designation when you request a CUP, so the property needs to be in compliance with the number of bedrooms and the operating license for the CUP. So it's in violation of that portion of the ordinance. That's the reasoning for the recommendation.
And to give them the benefit of the doubt, that's why we're without prejudice?
Correct, so they can fix that and come back.
That's where I was headed. You already settled it.
All right.
Thank you, Brittany.
Chairman, one more question.
Go ahead.
The Sheriff's Office, what do they have to do to comply, or this applicant to comply with the county sheriff's?
Because it's firearm sales.
I'm not. Do they have to have a permit to sell online? Do they have to have a permit? I mean, do we have that permit showing that?
They need a permit through.
Kobe Sacrament, Planner. They have to get a license through the ATF. The Sheriff's Office, I don't think the Sheriff's Office has any specific permit that they require. It would get routed to the Sheriff's Office, though, but the overarching authority over it is the ATF.
So do they show that, he has to show that before he gets compliance from us as well?
So they actually have to get our CUP first before the ATF will give them a license. So generally, what happens is they go to the ATF to apply for that license. The ATF will call us and make sure that they have all the proper permits through us before the ATF will give them that permit.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Didn't have that on there, so I didn't know if we were, we have a different compliance or something, so, thank you.
I guess the only other item I had on my mind, this basically, we reviewed a number of small arms sales deals, and they were either Internet or wholesale. This is the first one I've seen that's retail, and he's starting out from scratch, so he doesn't have, like, busloads of people coming in. But is that kind of a change in position, or is that something that needs to be addressed when they reapply for the CUP?
It can be readdressed when they apply for the CUP.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I have a question. It's under interdepartmental review. It says, County Highway says adequate off-street parking must be provided. Parking in the right of way is not permitted. Is there an issue with that, or is that just a statement?
That's just a statement, since it's on Sheridan Lake Road, and it's on kind of a strange curve. I'm assuming that the on-street parking would cause visibility issues. Thank you.
Is anyone in the audience here to speak on this? The applicant? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Megan.
So the bottom line at this point, Mr. Chair, is that we just don't, we can't meet the zoning requirements the way it's set now, and that's basically it.
Per Brittany's instruction of what the ordinance is? Chair will address a motion.
I would so make a motion that we deny without prejudice conditional use permit CU 22-53.
There's second. Moved and seconded to, an action for CU 22-53 to follow staff's recommendation, deny without prejudice. Any discussion? From the audience? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. On to item number 14. And we do, just for the record, we do have folks on Zoom, and I believe you're the applicants, Christina, Chris and Christina Fellerman.
Correct.
Yes.
We do have a number of speaker request forms, just for the record. Go ahead.
Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner. Agenda item number 14 is for conditional use permit CU 22-52 to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant owners, Chris and Christina Fellerman, they are on Zoom if you have any questions for them. The location of VHR is 13240 Daybreak Ridge Road. The lot size is eight acres. The current zoning is agricultural district. Existing land use is residential. No specific flood hazard area on the property. When considering conditions, or considering conditional use permits, the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in the review of conditional use permit applications. They are on the screen, and I will leave it on.
Christine, can I get you to lift the microphone up, please, a little?
Correct.
Thank you.
Our findings are, no. A vacation home rental takes place entirely within existing residence. The requested use should not be detrimental or endanger, endanger the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Two, no. A VHR is considered a residential use. This request should not change the residential, long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, no. The requested use should not affect normal, orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Four, yes. All necessary utilities are in place. The subject property is served by community water and onsite wastewater system that is sized for a three-bedroom single-family home. Number five, yes. Access is off of Daybreak Ridge via an existing approach. The requested use should not significantly affect the traffic congestion. Number six, yes. The property is zoned agricultural district. An existing conditional use permit is required to operate the vacation home rental in the zoning district. The future land use is agricultural, oh, sorry, seven, yes. The future land use is agricultural district. Allowing this conditional use permit should not be consistent with the current comprehensive plan view 202040. The interdepartmental review was routed to the Loveland Canyon Road District, County Highway, County Fire, County Sheriff's Office, Emergency Services 911, and County Planning. Emergency Services 911, just comment, A, just needed to ensure applicant has their house number posted where the driveway intersects Daybreak Ridge Road, and on the house facing the driveway, per Pennington County Ordinance number 20. Two, Environmental Planner. Advocate currently has a valid onsite wastewater treatment system construction permit and a valid onsite water treatment operating license. The system is sized for a three-bedroom house. The Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources issued approval of the system for a daily flow of 360 gallons for six people in the letter dated April 8, 2022. In future plans to upgrade or repair the onsite wastewater treatment system on this property, must comply with the requirements set forth in section 204-J of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance, including conducting percolation tests and having profile holes inspected and obtaining approval from the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources. No other objections or concerns were received. On December 29, the staff, December 20, 2022, staff performed a site visit and found a smoke detector in each of the three bedrooms, fire extinguishers on both levels. The fire pit outside is filled with bricks, and posted in the home, applicants are prohibited renters from having open fires. The staff has received one complaint or concern regarding requested use of the subject property from one neighbor, which is included in the staff report. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 22-52 with conditions.
Thank you, Christine. Questions for Christine?
In the picture that you've got of the actual building itself, off on the left, there's another building.
It's a garage.
Yeah. Does that have water and that sort of thing into it? Is that a, what is that?
We can answer if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay. That is a standalone garage with two double doors. There is no plumbing to that, just electrical, and there is propane from the propane tank run there for a heater, and there is a heater in there, but there is not insulation, so.
And it's locked for personal use.
Yeah.
For our UTV.
Yep.
Any other questions for Christine?
How many vacation home rentals are in this particular area? Are there numerous ones, or is this it, or?
When looking at the map, I did not see any really close in this general vicinity.
Okay.
Okay.
Christine, I just had one note that this particular site had a vacation home rental CUP before?
Correct, from the previous owners.
Okay. Anything else for Christine? All right. The Chair, how the Chair is going to handle this is that we're going to have your applicant speak last. It kind of avoids the circus of going back and forth from other people that care to speak that are opposed to this. Is that all right, Christine?
Okay.
Thank you. So do you understand I'm going to have you speak after? That way, you can address those things that come up in the way of opposition. We don't have to go back and forth, or hopefully, we won't have to.
So Chairman.
Doesn't always work. Yes.
One question. How long was it a vacation home rental before this one?
Since 2014.
That one, I can't tell you the answer to. I can just tell you that it was.
2014, she said, Charlie.
14?
2014. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got Desil Peterson. Just introduce yourself, Desil, just for the record, and go on from there.
Excuse me. Excuse me. My name is Desil, D-E-S-Y-L Peterson. I reside at 2259 Hazel Lane. I am one house away from this property. There's one property between that, theirs and ours. And I would like to, I did not provide anything in advance. One of our other neighbors will be, will be talking about what they submitted to you. But I do have some concerns, and I believe that this application should be denied, and there are several reasons. First is that the property does not. First is that the property does not physically meet the requirements that the board is imposing, which is it's for six, excuse me, six people to use that facility. If you look at the photographs in your materials, you will see that there is one bedroom that has multiple beds in it. There are four. There, it's called the bunkhouse on VRBO, and it has two beds that appear to be double occupancy, and then there are over top of them, two bunk beds that probably are single occupancy. Well, that would be six people in that room alone. There is another bedroom that has, according to the VRBO site, has two beds with double occupancy, and then the master bedroom has one bed with double occupancy. That adds up to 12 people. Now, in addition, their VRBO site says that there are nine beds in that house. Now, one of them appears to be a crib, so we aren't going to count that, but that means there are eight beds for only allowing six people. So it is physically does not meet the requirements. Now, if you allow them to just impose the requirement that they have to limit it to six people, we're just asking for trouble, and that's apparent and in fact how the property has been used since they have taken over the property. There are multiple cars there overnight. It's very obvious that in fact there are more than six people staying there overnight. In fact, one of the reviews that was on VRBO from July of 2022, the review starts, "Our family of 11 had an awesome vacation in Christie's beautiful home." Obviously, what they're doing is showing on the VRBO site that they have all these beds available, and people come and they use all of those beds. So if the property does not physically comply with the requirement for the subject system, and on that alone, it should be denied. I would like to put into record this page from the VRBO site. Can I give that to you?
Jerry, since this wasn't done in advance, you suppose you should send it around for the?
Yes, and then just.
Just for appropriateness, so folks, commissioners can look at it. Thank you. As well as anything else, I don't know what else Dessel's turning in.
I have a photo from, again, from the VRBO site that shows the second bedroom with two double occupancy beds, and I would hand that on. I think you have the photo of the bunk room, but I'll pass them around. If you look at it, you can see that the bunk room has been constructed for maximum occupancy in that room. And I believe I was told that they put in a new wall in order to create these separate bedrooms. So I'll pass these around as well.
Chairman?
Yes.
Are you guys allowed to take articles the day of? Don't they have to submit these 24 hours before?
Can't say that I know the answer to that one.
Because submitting all this stuff now is kind of hard for us to just look on the fly to see something that has issues. I mean, to discuss it.
I guess my, my opinion is, as the chair would be, that when we have a person that comes to testify, they don't fall under our rules. They're allowed to bring what they desire and turn it in, but that's my opinion.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So the public is allowed to submit their stuff. Whether you guys have time to look at it, that's up to you. I mean, if you want to continue it out so that way you have time to look at it, you can, but obviously that 24-hour rule is kind of in place so that way there's plenty of time for all of the members to look at stuff, but it's discretionary when it comes to the public. It really should be at least accepted.
All right. Thank you. Dessel, can I ask you, just wait a moment then, please?
Sure.
Then I'd like to ask the commissioner, go ahead, continue on, Deb.
Can I have a follow-up? So we are doing this also as commissioners, so we can read the information, make sure we know that information and why that information is submitted, because it can be detrimental to a no or yes vote sometimes when people don't have that information ahead of time. If people want to submit it, I guess, I think our commission is asking 24 hours. I don't know if the planning commission is going to be different than that, but again, it can be submitted, but a lot of times without the correct information and someone submitting it that day, it could be detrimental without being able to look it up, because ma'am, we try to look up and find those facts or those truths beforehand in order to make a good decision. So submitting it today, folks, is a little harder to make a decision. So that might be a no to you, ma'am, but we have lots of articles in here that we have to read and a book. This is a book we have to go through. So you submitting it today is a little rough to the man.
Dessel, I appreciate if you don't reply.
Okay.
We're not, we're not talking to Dessel right now. It's just a commission problem, Deb. And I believe your rules call for a member. If you were to submit something to the Board of Commissioners, you have to submit it 24 hours in advance, I believe.
So does our constituents.
That's what, what I think you were referring to.
People that have information in our books that we review have to be 24 hours.
So the problem here.
But on agenda.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So that is still up for debate at this point. I just had a conversation with Jay about this last week, so I don't think that that's definitive at this point with regard to the public.
Okay, so in my case, then, for me to make a good decision, people submitting it that day or telling it that day, without me being able to look up the facts and information, is very hard for me to make a decision when you, I'm just looking at this stuff right now. So that's, okay, it'll be my opinion today then.
Yeah, and I mean, any, any member of this board, if they want more time to review the information, can request to continue, and it can be voted on.
Thanks, Megan. That's where I was headed. I need, that's why I asked Dessel, please wait. We need to review where our position is on this. In other words, do you desire this? And I think you probably ought to make a motion in that regard and put it on the record. So what's Dessel?
Mr. Chair, I, I do need to say that if in fact that's a rule that you're going to be imposing on the people who come to speak before you, that should be included in the public hearing notice that we receive. I had no idea.
Dessel, I've got to stop you. We don't have a motion on the table to discuss.
I understand.
I'm sorry. In fact, I'm going to ask you to just sit down, but we're going to bring you right back up after we solve our problem.
I have more to say.
I believe you do.
Okay.
Okay, we've got to discuss this. Go ahead. Mike, it looks like you have something to say.
You know, I, I understand what our county commissioner is saying, but by the same token, like with Ethel coming up, the lag time on this thing, I guess I'm not sure how you'd handle that. I'm really not. And in some cases, a comment is just a comment, but there's other cases where it could mean a completely different vote on this thing. So I guess I, I'm not too sure. I'd never thought about that. This is something that, that could be a game changer.
Anyone, another commissioner care to jump in?
Yeah, trying my two cents. I like the public bringing us items, whether it's before or during. We always have the power to continue any discussion that we have, any item that we have, and that gives us two weeks to review anything that the public brings to us. So I'm not in favor of setting a rule that says they have to have something or we can't look at it. I would be greatly in favor of just having them bring stuff today, and if we feel we need to review it further, that we continue that item.
Oh, Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with Kevin on, on that. It just depends on, I'm telling this also to the public, to make good decisions, we need all the facts and information submitted if we can ahead of time, if you can. Once in a while, it's easy to make it on the fly if there are pictures, because we already have pictures and stuff, but in other things, you might be continued because of that reason, because we don't have all the information. So I agree with Kevin. I don't, I don't know, it always has to be a rule in one sense, and the other, they make an agenda for a reason. Some people might miss that, which I understand, but we have an agenda for a reason, and most people submit their online comments, or there's all different ways to submit those. So not knowing ahead of time that you're supposed to submit comments and it just came up, sometimes that causes a detriment, like, like Kevin said, or other commissioner, that when you're trying to make a good decision, and it could be a game changer. So.
Megan.
I'm, I'm torn on this both ways, because I like to make, and people know me good enough that I like to make decisions based on facts and information that I have looked at ahead of time. We have 17 things on this agenda. Our books, even at our commission, are pretty, pretty big to look at all the information and to just add more on the fly. Sometimes it does, it becomes detriment, because we might miss something, depending on that information. Today, the, say your name again.
Dessel.
Dessels. Information might not be that critical, meaning it's critical, but it's not a huge thing to read, but sometimes that information is two or three pages long, or, or six people that added two or three pages to it. That's a lot to read on the fly, so I don't know if we, like you said, we can continue it, but then you're also continuing stuff that people need to be, you know, the applicant might need to move forward and have a certain deadline, so.
Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So this is a much larger discussion that I think probably needs its own separate items. So what I would suggest is that if one of the members think that they need more time in order to review this new information, that they make a motion to continue. If the board does not believe that they need additional time, then they just decide on this issue at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. That was going to be my recommendation. I've not yet looked at the information. These things happen, and in the past, we've accepted this. This is the first time this has been questioned. It's a fair question, no doubt, and, and it's an unfortunate question for a meeting like this, but it needs to be decided and then the information reviewed and put on the table. So Dessel, I'm going to ask you to come forward just before we make our motion here. If you have additional items that you were going to put on for the record, I would like you to do them at this time, if you, without comment, because we're going to make a motion.
I have no further submissions, other than my verbal submission.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Dessel.
Thank you, Dessel.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, looking at the pictures in our packet, they seem to show approximately the same thing, that there appear to be more places for people to sleep than, than six, so I don't think this is startling information that we received. One thing I did notice on this, this information that you provided is that the folks stayed in July of 2022, and we're just getting the application now. That's probably a bigger concern.
And when you like to make a motion then on our, so that we can open it for discussion?
Do we have to make a motion, or can we just leave it as is and go on?
That's been our operating rule in the past. Operating rules are acceptable under Robert's rules, and in the past, we've allowed our, people come forward, even applicants, it doesn't matter, that are first putting testimony into the record to allow the submission. They've submitted pictures. I can't think of anything that's very long. We've had some that were lost on the internet that were longer, and then they got submitted, but I can't remember anyone long. Anybody else can correct me on that? Go ahead, Gavin.
I would comment too, that, you know, I think that each individual, each individual case needs to be reviewed like that. We've got a couple of pictures that came through here. That didn't take us much time to deal with, and it's pertinent to the conversation. Now, if we got a pack of 10 pages, then that's a whole different story.
So Chairman, can I say something?
Yes.
Karen just said something that this staff recommends approval of conditional use permit. They didn't have a conditional use permit in July?
Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner.
I'm going, I'm not going to accept that one right now. We'll.
Well, what I'm saying is, it's proven my point. That's not in the report.
We need to get the problem solved that we have on hand here first.
Yep.
Yep, I'm sorry. And the problem is, what are we going to do? Are we going to make a motion? I believe we need a motion one way or the other, because it's been questioned for the record. That way, at least people have gotten something to take home and say, I don't agree with that, and they're watching us.
You want a motion, excuse me, to, to approve or deny right at this moment?
No, I want a motion that we were either going to accept submissions from Dessel or not. And we can do it, that we're going to continue on as we have before, accepting submissions from people that are giving testimony or not. So then at least it's part of the record. I believe that's, in fact, what Megan suggested we do at this point. We should make a motion and move on.
That's not what she suggested.
Oh, did I miss that?
Yes, Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney. So my suggestion is if any of you want more time, make a motion to continue. If none of you want more time, then nobody make a motion.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. I misunderstood that.
Because the issue of whether we're going to take public submissions after the fact is a much larger issue that involves both the State's Attorney's Office, the Board of Commissioners, and this board, and really all of the boards in the county, so.
Thank you.
It's a much larger discussion.
All right, we got that clarified. So I guess everybody just on a straw boat? Do we want to move on, or do we want to make a motion to continue?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear the rest of the testimony before I make any decision on a continuance.
Mike?
I agree.
Kevin? Deb?
I'm good.
Good, we're all good. Dessel, you're on the format again. Thank you.
Sorry to have created such controversy. That wasn't my intent. So as I was saying, the house is set up to maximize the occupancy of it. As I said, the VRBO site has, it listed as nine, nine beds. From the photographs that I saw, I counted 12, but there must be, no, I'm sorry, that's 12 occupancy, 12 occupancy, but I counted one, two, three, three plus four is seven, seven beds. So there must be some sleeper stuff or something like that, that's also good. If you allow and grant this permit with the configuration that they have, is simply asking for trouble. If we're simply going to say, well, you can't have more than six people, but in fact, they are advertising and showing photographs of multiple beds that are going to house multiple people beyond the six, then you are creating havoc. So on that fact alone, I think you should denigrate it. And I will say that we have had experience showing that the, these owners have allowed larger groups of people there. Dave Reinhardt, who is my neighbor, will talk about how he has seen, he has better view than I do. He has seen as many as five cars there on overnight, and five cars, there are multiple people in those cars. So if you actually grant this permit the way it is, we're all asking for trouble. That's my first point. My second point is, one that you have at least broached the subject of, is that this applicant was operating without a permit. I've been told that they thought that the permit from the, the other family, the Collesias who lived there before, that that carried forward, and apparently they didn't take the right steps to have that transferred forward. I find that a little hard to believe, because they are both professional realtors, and I would think that the realtors would know that you have to check into that sort of thing. And if they had checked into it and done, done it correctly, maybe they did know about it, I don't know, they would have found that that six-person limitation already existed on the Collesia permit, and it would have stopped them, I would have thought, from, from putting in all these extra beds to be used by more than six people. My third point is that what has happened there is a public nuisance to those of us in the neighborhood. I'll give you a few examples, and I think Dave Reinhardt will give you more. Shortly after they put the house on, on the rental market, there were three pickup trucks that arrived with very long trailers, and each of them had two side-by-side. And each of them had two side-by-side machines on there, except one just had one. So there were five side-by-side machines that came. They had these long trailers. They parked them all over the place, including on, on the Reinhardt's property. Then to make things worse, we saw that there were these little handmade arrows that were made and posted along the road pointing in, we have a single access road where we are, pointing in to where they go to go to the house. So that their friends, who I would assume were parking or camping somewhere else, would come and join them. And so they had this huge climb fab of all these people with these side-by-sides. That's one example of a public nuisance. Other examples are, they've had people going over onto the Reinhardt's property on a regular basis, forcing Reinhardt's family to absorb the expense themselves of putting up a fence on a fairly long property line. And they've had to bear that expense. There are other examples and I will leave that up to Dave Reinhardt to tell you more about it. But I think that these three, that this should be denied for three reasons. That they don't physically meet the requirements of the six persons. That they operated without a permit when they needed one. And that they have created a public nuisance. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Questions for Dessel.
I do. Uh, have, have you been on that website you're talking about? You've looked at it recently.
VRBO, yes.
Yeah. What do they advertise?
They.
Number, number of, you know, occupants.
What they had listed as of yesterday, when I looked at it, it said nine beds. Then it said sleeps six. Now, does that make sense to somebody who's, was looking to opt to rent it? No, they're gonna see all those beds and they're gonna use them like that lady who said, my eleven-member family really appreciated the use of this house.
There's no questions for Dessel. Thank you, Dessel.
Charlie, could I ask Brittany a question?
Sure.
When the staff goes out and, and does their report on a thing like this, do they count the number of beds? And say, for example, you go out and you find twelve beds or something like that and you're only supposed to have six. What do you do or do you?
Right. Um, so that is one of the things that differentiates a vacation home rental from, say, a single-family residence. Single-family residence, we look at as bedrooms and two people per bedroom. That's how the state sizes a septic. In a vacation home rental, we look at the number of people that are actually renting it or sleeping overnight guests. So you could have more beds or more occupancy than you have bedrooms. Um, because a lot of times they'll have sleeper sofas or lofts with beds. Does that make sense?
So this, this big bunk bedroom and all that, that's of no concern as such?
It is for the number of people. So, um, we just actually looked up the, the listing on VRBO. One listing has twelve beds. And then when we went back to it, it got changed to six people. So it, and then VR, so Airbnb and VRBO are conflicting. They don't have the same information. And then it got changed at some point during this meeting. So.
Thank you. Thank you. David Reinhardt. David, if you would just introduce yourself for the record and go on from there.
I'm David Reinhardt. I live at 22610 Hazel Lane, Rapid City. That's right next door to the property that we've been discussing. I just want to start by saying I don't take any particular joy in trying to, you know, get involved in stopping people from doing things. However, I think there are problems that exist now. I've been there seventeen years. Uh, the previous people, there was problems occasionally which I attempted to solve with them. This situation has changed in the fact that, you've heard what Dessel said. Um, I don't keep track of permits or anything else, but I know that a major part of construction was done between the two owners. That went on for a long time. I could see the trucks and so on. There has been violation of the six people. Uh, as Dessel mentioned, uh, several, five pickup trucks with trailers, some with two side-by-sides on. Uh, that was in, I can't tell you exactly when. It was in the growing season because I went out to mow and I had to get them to move their trucks. Um, what resulted from that was the owners put up a small little sign that said, please don't park on the grass. Didn't say anything about crossing over or anything. So I, yes, I have put up about six hundred foot of woolwood wire fence, uh, which I never had for all those other years. Um, I think that pretty much sums it up. I believe there's been massive changes to the inside of the house. Looking at the pictures, I had been in that house several times previous to this owner and so on. That's pretty much it.
Okay, just a moment. Any questions for David?
Thank you.
Go ahead, David.
No.
Oh, I, I.
I just said thank you, sorry.
Oh. Anyone else? Thank you, David. Anyone else here to speak on this matter that hasn't submitted a speaker request? Okay, let's return to the applicant, uh, then and we'll go, uh. Chris and Christine, I need you to introduce yourself just for the record. And then I'm gonna let you both introduce yourself at the same time. That way you can decide who is going to address what.
Sounds good. So I'm Christy Fellerman.
Oh, okay. We have to look there.
Can you move the screen over here?
Sure, I can.
Okay, sorry.
And you go ahead, and you're, you're Chris?
I'm Christopher Fellerman.
Okay, good. Go ahead and, and, uh, take off from there.
Okay, so a lot of stuff has been brought up. Um, first, we don't want to make neighbors mad. That's definitely not our intention. When we purchased the property, there was a CUP in place. Um, we were not notified about extending the CUP. We were notified that it was expiring. And we said, wait, we would love to extend, but we did not have that time. So we are going through all the proper channels to get a CUP back in place. Um, first, I just want to talk about construction because it seems like there's misinformation about construction. The home as it sits has not been changed. We have not added walls. We have not added rooms. We have, however, put about a hundred thousand dollars into the property with flooring, countertops, appliances, um, like just improving the property. But we have not added more bedrooms per se. The structure is what the structure was when we purchased. Um, regarding CUP, we were not aware of the six person. So we were operating as twelve. That is correct. So when we have a review saying eleven, that was correct. We did have eleven people there. And we did set up our home to be comfortable for that amount of people. The bunk room could house four kids. It could. More, I mean, not all, do, but it's an option for guests, right? So that was set up that way. Um, since knowing about the CUP being retired, I guess I would say, I don't know the terminology. We have, after meeting with Christina, or Christine, sorry, we have taken it to six because we're told we need to. And we do have the wastewater report from last year, from whatever it was, December, that stated six.
April.
Eight, oh, April.
Yeah.
So we have that report. Since then, we've also been talking with the state. We've met with Garrett Solseth. He's come out to our property. He's done all the testing. We have new design back for septic to upgrade septic. We've talked with the state again this last week. And he is under contract to increase our wastewater system. So we're, as homeowners, number one, we care about our property. I mean, we, we're not absentee. We very much care. We've put a lot of money in. We enjoy it ourselves. Um, it's a very nice property. We have a four-car max, so I'm sorry about the trailers. Um, we did not know about that. We do have a Ring camera that will help us monitor that. Um.
Well, and I guess one, one clarification, um, for the committee would be, is there a permit needed for side-by-sides? Or is that part of a contingency or a CUP that you have to monitor and/or kind of police your guests on the amount of side-by-sides they bring? That would be a question for you guys to respond to for us because we were not aware of that. And that was brought up as a complaint that they came with five side-by-sides and.
Chris, I'm gonna go ahead and have the department, planning department, go ahead and, uh, reply to that right now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner, can you repeat that, please?
We're just curious, I, just speaking to the side-by-sides. Is that a requirement of the CUP? Or is that a neighborhood or a county, like you cannot have five side-by-sides? Or you can't have more than one trailer or two trailers on a property?
Do you want me to answer that? It's based on parking, is what it's really based on. It's, uh, you have vehicles, you have trailers and you have cars and you have side-by-sides. You're required to have so many parking spaces and those spaces, um, aren't necessarily an increase. You are allowed to have guests in the ordinance, uh, day guests. Uh, so it's still based on parking and the total number of vehicles that you're gonna have. And your day guests are limited. Is that, would that be a way to answer it?
It is. And when we look at like the impacts to the neighborhood, if it's something that's typical of what normal people that live in the neighborhood would have, so that's what we look at. So normal people in the neighborhood probably don't have five trailers with side-by-sides. So from our perspective, when we look at the impact to the neighborhood, that's how we look at it.
Does that help? Does that help answer your question, Chris?
I, I guess so, because I, I guess what I'm bringing up is, I mean, that's unfortunate. I wouldn't, I wouldn't advise all of that noise going on in the neighborhood. But at the same time, with eight acres and a detached garage and parking spots that can accommodate that, and we have a next-door neighbor that, that did speak, I mean, alone on a similar-sized property, he's got over, I think, eight trailers in his yard. So like, I think it is in, whereas I understand that it's not lovely, like for some people, but for others, it's probably pretty normal, I guess. And I don't think that we're out of, and I don't think it's part of the CUP, but I also wanted to address it, right?
Okay, thank you.
And understand our role in it because we are very conscious owners and want to abide. So that's why I wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Christina, you're going to go on, I assume?
Well, uh, and I just wanted to add in on.
Go ahead.
Um, since knowing about the, the six-person max as approved, we, um, yes, maybe we should have done more on our side to understand the CUP that was in effect. So, and that's unfortunate on our side and, but then since knowing, we have taken the steps. And, um, so we've been talking to Garrett Solseth. The current configuration of the septic, because I think that's a big part that's in question, is a current fifteen-hundred-gallon tank with a thousand-gallon lift station to, uh, one, uh, drain field. Um, we've contracted with Garrett to take it to a, uh, four-to-five-bedroom max by adding a, a secondary fifteen-hundred-gallon tank in between the current fifteen-hundred-gallon tank and the thousand, uh, tank, holding tank. Um, and adding an additional bed field. And I think Garrett would have been out there, uh, or Garrick, I can't remember. Garrett. Okay, Garrett. Was out there last week or this week to start the process of taking, uh, samples on the new, um, drain field that will be installed and then submitting his, uh, permit first to the county. And then we'll take it to the state, um, from there and looking to complete in, um, late spring. And we do have that document of his, uh, quote to us, um, as well as what he's going through. But that probably should be coming to the county within the next couple of weeks, I would think, as part of his process with the specifics.
Chairman.
Just a moment. I was, I was gonna see if Christina wanted to go on before we.
Okay, I was just gonna ask our staff something so I could remember what I had to ask.
Okay, can you remember just a minute? Christina, were you, you going to go on or are you folks done with your testimony?
Uh, just one second. We wanted to go over all the, the points. Oh, um, for each bed, so like if it's a king bedroom, um, we, or a queen, you designate on the VRBO or Airbnb sites as, uh, two people per bed then.
It, so when you do a vacation home, it doesn't, I mean, like if you say twelve, which that's our intent, we would love to house eleven or twelve, not more. Um, but that's what we would love to house. We do own additional property, four-bedroom homes that are twelve, not in the state of South Dakota. Um, but you have different configurations for different people. So there, there's just options. It doesn't mean they sleep that many. And our rules state, no parties, no, you know, additional, like we don't want a lot of vehicles. So that was, I mean, even for our house rules, the trailers were a violation. And there is, there is a neighborhood email that goes around, so it, we could have been notified. And neighbors do have our information as well.
And we're open to those communications.
And the minute we heard somebody parked on the neighbor's yard, which we had the property surveyed. So it wasn't, I mean, the stakes were in. Um, we put up the sign. So we're, we'll do what we need to do to respect the neighbors, but, I mean, in all respect, I, I mean, I'll do respect, it's, we're not a nuisance.
Thank you. Any questions for the Fellers?
Oh, I do.
You need to have your question answered before you ask them or?
I can ask them first.
Go ahead.
So, do you have other vacation home rentals?
We do.
Okay, and how long have you operated them?
Six years, but they're in different states.
Okay. And so do they let you say six people instead of twelve people? And when were you deciding to change from six to twelve people? And then do your, you're already in the process of doing your excavation and stuff for your wastewater treatment to change that. Um, your off-street parking would be different. So what you've applied for today is not what you're putting for your CUP, if I'm correct, unless I'm missing something.
Why?
Right now, we'd like to operate within, so with the six people.
But then how do we amend the, the CUP once the septic system?
Can I jump in here to help you? That was going to be my question, whether you understood that you're going to be subjected to an additional review uh, with the, uh, additional plans that you have regarding the septic and the bedrooms. And I just, that was my only question that I had at that time was, do you understand that? And I think that's what Deb is asking.
And regarding the question of different properties that are vacation home rentals, it is different county to county, state to state, city to city. It is different. So regulations are different everywhere. So what is acceptable, let's say in Pennington, is totally different than in Minnesota where we have owned and in Florida where we own. It is, it is different.
Thank you. Deb, before you go on, I think Brittany wants to tune up my answer or something, or tune me up. Go ahead.
Sure. Chairman, I just have a point of clarification. I just want the Planning Commission to understand, under our ordinance, it only allows a maximum of five bedrooms, which would be ten people plus, or, you know, so you can only have a maximum of, you know, ten people in the vacation home. So I just want, want the, the commission to know that, that our ordinance does.
I did not include that, but they, just to verify what I told them, they would be. Not include it, but they, just to verify what I told them, they would be subjected to an additional review if they were to decide to do this.
That is correct.
Thank you. Go ahead, Deb.
Okay, so number one, then you can only go up to ten people. Number two, you've had businesses all over different states, but you did not know at this time when you're opening a business in Pennington County that that VHR would be different. Um, that doesn't make sense to me because I own businesses and I, I would follow the rules and regs. And I would look them up before I opened a business or bought somebody else's. Make sure I was complying or that this business was complying ahead of time. Um, some of it doesn't make sense to me that you don't know that the max is ten people. Some of that, you're not supposed to know every rule and regulation, ma'am, but also, um, you're a realtor, so you sell and deal with property every day. So common sense would tell me that that'd be the first thing you would check is the rules and regulations of something you were buying or bought and make sure that's complied. Just from realtors and people I know, um, they are a lot, they don't know every rule and regulation, but they do when they buy something. This is not a thousand dollar property, this is not a five thousand dollar property. This is a pretty expensive property to not know the rules and regulations. So to me, um, I understand you can, you can start to comply, you can follow the rules at six people, but you did not know, um, that when you had eleven, number one, that you weren't in compliance because you needed to follow another CUP, that you have six people, but you had eleven. I don't know if they were in the house or if they spent overnight. Um, and that you were going to upgrade this to a, a bigger place or a bigger, uh, rental place for more people to stay, up to ten people. Um.
Deb, I don't mean to interrupt, but we're, we don't have a motion on the floor. Is there a question for the fellow? Then we can go to discussion.
I don't think I need to have a question. I'm doing the same thing as your applicants are doing or your people that in the audience.
For discussion, we opened it for questions for the fellow.
Okay.
That's what the chair has done.
Well, they are questions. They are questions of you, you are people that should have known this, but the question is, why didn't you know? Number two, um, you are upgrading and you're gonna need another CUP. Um, I guess I would have upgraded and, and done all these things beforehand, um, before I even put in for a CUP. Um, so my question is, with all those intentions, I understand, but you own a business, why didn't you look up the rules and regulations ahead of time?
So the rules that we have per Pennington County, I have VHR performance requirements. Number one, the maximum occupancy allowed in a VHR shall be no greater than two persons per bedroom plus four additional persons. But maybe fewer based on the capacity of the wastewater system. Children age five and under are not counted as occupants. Number two, VHRs are limited to a maximum of five bedrooms. So that states if I have a four bedroom house, I can have two per bedroom plus four, which is twelve, as long as my wastewater system allows for it. So we did do our homework, and that is what your rules state per what I found on the internet for Pennington County.
So can somebody answer the question? Because this is what's on the line, and then we're saying something different on here.
Yeah, so Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. I, I don't know how you can interpret it that way. That's not correct. It is ten. Um, if you don't understand the ordinance, then I would highly suggest if you're operating all of these businesses that you should probably hire an attorney.
Or, um, call and ask maybe your planning director. So I'm not trying to be mean to you in a sense, but when I run a business, I really check all avenues to make sure I'm running it well. Plus, this is not a small property, um, that you're putting a lot of money in, ma'am. So, um, I guess that's my bottom line. It's not really a question. It's, the question is, um, I would look at all the avenues if I was opening a business, and I've opened other businesses to make sure those, it is run right and it's done right, especially because this is a pretty awesome property. The positives is you are keeping this property, if it looks like this, very nice. Um, I don't have a problem with VHRs if they're run right and they're done right. I'll just tell you that up straight. But I also, um, when you're in the business of realty or you're in the business of that kind of your business, I expect a little bit more, uh, due diligence on, um, what you're doing in, in this case in the neighborhood. So, um, those are, those are my issues. How about that?
So when it says two people per bedroom plus four, I don't understand how I'm reading that wrong and under five bedrooms.
So maybe, ma'am, you should ask Miss Christina that, these questions beforehand, instead of up here on the dais, because then at this time, they'd be able to answer it more specifically. They probably can today, but, uh, maybe we need to continue this so we have the answers.
Additional questions? Christina, for Christina or Chris? Thank you. Go ahead, Kevin.
So how many security cameras do you have? And, and I know that you have a, um, property manager on there. Um, how are the complaints handled? How are you policing the site? Um, what are, what are those criteria? You mentioned you had a ring camera. Most of the time, those are on the front door, it, limited view, so forth, so on. Um, if you're not on the property or adjacent to the property, how are you really policing your tenants? And then what are the repercussions, um, if somebody is violating your rules?
So we do have the ring camera. Um, the, I mean, other than that, we are very active with our people. I mean, we're very active. So I don't, I don't know how to say, I can't police it. Not every VHR host lives on site or next door. So we have our local contact person. We have our property manager, both Chris and I. Um, and, I mean, if there is a complaint, we're, we're going to address it, right? If that's valid or not valid. But it's not something where you have to live on site to be a, an owner of a vacation home.
So I guess my question is, what is the action that you're taking? And how are those, you know, violations that you are being reported to being addressed? I haven't heard the answer to those questions.
So if somebody's in violation, let's say we have twelve people max, or ten, or six, or whatever it is, right? Then we will let them know, hey, we, you're in violation. You either need to fix this and leave, or then you'll be asked to go. And in honesty, like in six years, we've had that one time at our properties. People are pretty respectful and they, there is a, um, accountability when you're booking on platforms where we get reviewed and the guest gets reviewed as well. So if they're not in compliance, then they risk not being able to rent additional properties. So the, the time with the trailers, we didn't know about that. So if a neighbor wanted to tell us, then we absolutely would have said something. Because we don't want that either.
So prior, well, once booked, we have both, um, phone number and email connection with the, with the guest. So we have live connection with the guest at any time.
Yeah, that, that helps answer the question. So, um, the, the point was brought up of the multiple trailers being in violation of your rules. Um, and it seems like there should be some responsibility of, of being able to understand when this is happening. Um, because it is a, a premium site. It is a great spot for UTVs to be able to access other areas. So as a, as a renter, as a property owner, um, you know, if you had some cameras that were, you know, overseeing that parking lot so you could see what was going on, or your property manager person would stop by or drive by at some point, that seems, um, very respectful of ownership and respecting your neighbors.
Yeah, and, uh, Commissioner, we do, we do have the ring camera set up for the front door, which, um, does have, um, wide angle, um, viewing of all the parking spots other than one, like corner parking spot, but they have to pass through the ring camera, um, to get there. So we, we can review, we can rewind a ring camera feed to be able to see all vehicles coming and going. So we do have viewing of that, and we state in our listing a maximum of four, which is in compliance with the VHR performance requirements as well, but also what we want as well. Because we don't want a ton of guests and a ton of, um, vehicles at the property.
And, but that's just our, I mean, that's our personal opinion.
Yes.
Any other questions for Chris or Christina?
Just a couple, Mr. Go ahead, Kevin. I'm curious about when you purchased the property, um, the CUP that was previously in effect ended in October. So you've had about three months or so since then, and have you been running it as a vacation home since October?
Yes, we have had people stay since October, yes. And we've been in the process here of re-upping. One thing I just want to go back to is we weren't, we did not know, or we weren't told. Like earlier, somebody said, we're giving them two more weeks, right, to continue this CUP. We didn't get that. We got, your CUP is expired, you'll need to renew. We didn't get phone calls saying, hey, or, or mailing or anything stating you need to re-up. We got an old owner said, hey, I'd like to expire this. It's done. Now you need to move forward with your, your own CUP, of which we did right away. Like right when we, right when we found out that we couldn't renew, upgrade, whatever we needed to do, we got on it. And there are many, many VHRs in Pennington County that haven't gone through this process, which I know you understand, but we want to do it right. Right? So we are doing what we need to do here, but there's been some loopholes, like in the process on both sides.
Do you have additional questions, Kim? Any other additional questions?
Chairman. Um, not really questions. So October twenty second, or was it seventeenth? Kevin, when did it expire? Sorry.
Ten eleven.
Ten eleven. It's been expired. And then when did you put in for the CUP with the, with the county?
I don't have that application right in front of me, but right when we heard about it, we started all the process.
Okay, can I ask you something? Do you not, um, see where your inspection and stuff that is posted, when that would expire? And when the CUP, when you bought this, it wouldn't have said when it expired? Or how long the CUP was because you were in the business of conditional use or your, um, vacation home rentals? So I'm not, not getting the nonsense from what you're saying. Because if you're in the business and you do this all over the states, but it expired October eleventh, and you needed to re-up it, you didn't re-up it till, do we have that date, um, planning commissioners, planners?
We started it right away and we contacted, we went through all the inspections, which takes time. We got on your agenda. We've been pushed back, which is just fine. But we've been, ever since we found out, we've been on it.
Christine Phillip, Assistant Planner, the actual application went through in December.
So when did they submit the application? December? So you submitted the application in December. Do other states, they just let you, so you, something expires?
We don't need conditional use permits in Florida or Minnesota. It is a procedure.
So, if, I, I just don't get it. I guess I'm gonna be up straight. So I'm in the realty business. I sell and buy properties. I have VHRs in other states, and now I'm saying that, um, it's expired at ten eleven. Um, and now I didn't put in to change it till December. Um, I'll just tell you up straight. That, that did sound quite like you want to follow the rules and regulations. To me, it sounds like you needed, the cash flow was more the issue than the.
Thank you, Deb.
And selling it, so.
I think the answer to questioning.
One follow up to that, please?
Charlie, I need to be up straight, so I'm gonna say the facts. Um, when we're making good decisions.
On the floor and you'll get an opportunity to state your facts. The chair has said that, uh, there is no question in that.
There is a question. They, they are saying.
There is no question in that.
They're saying, uh, ten eleven is what Kevin said.
Is asking you to give up and accept there is no question in that so that we can go on.
Your choice.
Thank you. Did you get the date that was spoken of here? You said you didn't have that date, and I want to make sure you have that date. Go ahead, Christine, again, please. The date of the application. They didn't have that in their records right in front of.
December of twenty twenty two.
Go ahead and state it for the record.
Christine Phillip, Assistant Planner, um, it was notarized December fifth of twenty twenty two.
All right, thank you.
In October.
And I just wanna just make a point.
Just a second.
Sorry.
Chris.
Um, just on the transfers, and I know there's other people in the audience that have done these before. Um, it's pretty clear in our ordinance that, um, they do have to notify us within twenty days of the transfer, um, of the property so they can do this. Otherwise, the process starts all over again, and it's in the ordinance under section C five.
Did everyone understand what Brittany just said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add something?
Go ahead, Chris. You got, you're the next one up.
Appreciate that. Um, when we were notified in, on October eleventh, um, from Christine, um, there was communication that immediately went back and forth, and we can produce that for the council as well. But to get everything together, which is, I don't know how many items for an actual application, um, takes time. And then we got on that right away, but there was immediate communication between us and the office upon being notified. So it wasn't that, we got the notification on October eleventh and we didn't respond until December.
Okay, Chris, if, if you listen to what Brittany indicated, um, some of that should have taken place between previous owner and yourself. They should have known that as well. Uh, it is in the ordinance, and, and that's the point that was trying to be made, I'm sure, by Deb. That it is in the ordinance, that as a property owner and as a previous property owner, there is some requirements in regards to, uh, a transfer of the conditional use permit. If that's not done, then it is in fact revoked.
Got it.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Any additional questions? Thank you. We're going to go ahead and, and go back to the audience, Chris. Anybody else that would like to speak on this before we close to the commission discussion? Thank you. Go ahead. Please come up and introduce yourself just for the record.
I'm Sue Reinhardt, and I live at twenty-two, six, ten Hazel. I'm just next to their property. A couple of things I just want to bring up.
Can you put the microphone just a little bit closer to you?
How's that? Better?
That's better.
You know, they say they have eight, eight acres in their property, which is correct. However, I'd say six acres is in a canyon. The parking they're talking about is barely, I don't know if there's a picture up there in what you have, but it's very narrow. On their side, there's a little small strip of land here, and in the middle is where their fire pit. There isn't a lot of parking. That's why those trailers ended up on our property. There is not parking there. They're gonna increase it to ten or whatever. What parking lot? There isn't a parking lot. It's a driveway with grass on this side, a very small strip, and then the big firing area. There is no parking lot. Second, you know, when they had, we were trying to mow her lawn, and those people brought those trailers in. And I have pictures, I didn't bring them, but I have pictures showing all these trailers. I guess I could have submitted them. But, you know, the renters came and talked to us, and they were very gracious, very kind. We had no idea we were property, parking on your property. Why is that? If you're renting, you should clearly know where the lines are on the property. They had no idea. Oh, we didn't know. So they were forthright saying they have no idea that they couldn't park on our land. Well, it's not my job to police that property. I'm a neighbor trying to live in my home, and I don't, I shouldn't have to go over to people and, not that I didn't have to, they came to us, but it's unfortunate. And then, you know, the, the thing you asked about is enforcement with the parties and the loud noise, and they have their numbers out. And if they have too many, they'll know and they'll take care of it. How do they know there's too many? Who tells them? So the landlords have to go and start talking and raising problems, and you said, Charlie, today, you're limited enforcement in these. today, you're limited enforcement in these C U Ps, you know? So how are we, as owners, we're just trying to have a nice residential community, how can we have to be the police holders? Oh, they can have their contacts, but they don't live there. They don't see the fires going on, or the people peeing outside in the garage, I have my grandkids over there, and they're peeing outside in full view that they can see them. I mean, that's just not a good environment to be in. So, and if there's a fire or something, look, call the police now, the fire department, because they're not there to handle it. They have all their signs, no fires or whatever they have, but in the long run, they are not there. You have contacts, but you're not there. We have two cameras, it's not gonna solve the problem when you have people over on your land, walking their dogs and doing whatever else they're doing, and there's nobody there. You can't catch them on our property, because your cameras don't go that far. And so, it's just unfortunate for us, we lived here 17 years, and now we're stuck as a neighborhood trying to police this, because they don't live here, and they just want to get more money and more people in to make it a good rental. Well, it's a nuisance with all the cars and the noise, and it's just a problem. And, you know, they say, well, we know how, but there's too many. Nobody's gonna tell you there's too many. Who's gonna do that? Unless the neighbors are taking pictures and always coming in here, and you know what? I didn't retire so I could sit there and watch the neighborhood go downhill and watch a rental. So, I just wanted to say, you know, there's no parking, and they can say all they want, you know, I turned excuses. We didn't know, we didn't know, but you know what? You own the property, you're responsible for that property, not your neighbors. If you want to invest your money and you do it, that's fine, but you know what? It's not my job. You own it, you take care of whatever you're supposed to do. Obviously, they've proven that they haven't, so I think we should deny this.
Okay, questions for Mrs. Reinhardt? Thank you.
I have one.
Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
So if the property was owned by an individual, private ownership family, and the people that lived there decided to pee on the outside all the time, would that be your responsibility to report that as a violation to somebody? I'm just trying to create a distinction here, where if it was a private landowner doing something that you disapproved of, you would report that violation to somebody?
Yeah, I would.
So, what's the difference between a vacation home rental and a private landowner in that policing aspect?
Private landowner, they live there. Private landowner lives there. They can see what's going on, they actually are active in whatever they're doing on that property. These people are renters, they don't own it, they don't care. If they cause trouble, they don't care. They're, I'm here for two days, I'm here for a week. They don't care. That's the difference. They don't have an investment in this, they rented it for whatever amount each night, and that's all they care about. I'm here for a week to have fun. I don't come in a party, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna have music till midnight, I don't care. I know the rule says 10 o'clock, but you know what? I don't care. Who's gonna catch me? And that's the difference. And also, if you have a person living there next door, usually, in our neighborhood, we're very fortunate, people will talk to each other if there is an issue between neighbors. We don't have very many. The vacation rentals are the issue. But the people who live in their homes have a vested interest in that home, because they live there, they take care of it, they maintain, they actually physically have camaraderie with the neighbors. These people do not, they don't live here.
Any other questions for Mrs. Reinhardt? Thank you. Yes, sir, please come up and introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Byron Altman, I live at 13206 Lewis Drive. I'm kind of in the heart of the meadow. And in order to reach this property, they have to drive around two sides of my property. And that was noisy when all those side-by-sides were there. I don't know of any residents up there that is 10 people. In our area, there are two to five people per house, and they're gonna be moving in wanting to rent to 10. That sounds like multi-family dwelling to me. And I will echo the statements that these are non-residents, they are not neighbors. Short-term rentals can never be a neighbor. They're there to enjoy the countryside, and they're gone. We're all neighbors, we support each other, so having a large B and B there doesn't really go with the environment. And I don't know who's got eight trailers on their property, but I'd like to know how they know those eight trailers are there. Were they walking around on somebody's property to find out? That's my-
Are you asking us about the trailers?
Excuse me, that's out of order, sorry. Right now, it's out of order. Go ahead, any questions?
Chairman. Sir, do you guys have a covenants for V H Rs in your road district, or anywhere written that you can't have V H Rs on this?
I'm not aware of any restrictions on V H R.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. Chair's concerned about, this seems to be quite a heated matter, so I'm gonna ask that a motion be put on the table before we bring it to discussion. And that motion can either be per staff's recommendation or denied. I couldn't care less, but we're gonna discuss it. It needs to be seconded, so we can properly do it. Would you like to take recess and think about it?
I believe that we approve C U 22-52.
Is there a second to that? Moved in second to approve first staff's recommendation, conditional use permit, C U 22-52. Chair open for discussion, Deb.
Okay, Chairman. So, it also, if you look at April 8, 22, Department of Natural Resources, that's when they were checking into this V H R as well, obviously through wastewater systems, through the health department, wasn't until 10/18. For me, I can't approve this based on, if you're not following the rules and regulations now, and the neighbors are having issues, what happens in the future on this V H R? I'm sorry, but you're in the business of knowing some of these things. I didn't say you'd be perfect, I didn't say you had to know every rule and regulations on V H Rs, but, to me, if you start with issues and problems, some of the neighbor stuff I'm not in agreement with, but what makes it, for me, say that you're not going to follow the rules and regulations from here on out? It's kind of your job, it's what you do every day, if I'm correct. You also, you had to have known other realtors in this area that know how to do V H Rs, and have V H Rs, and know a lot of them that do. Why you didn't know, and why you're claiming you didn't know, I can't accept that. So, for me, part of the rules and regulations have to be followed in order for things to run the way they are supposed to. If they are complaints that you could take care of, that's fine, but these are pretty major areas that you forgot, to me, in your professional businesses. So, what happens when they're just into V H Rs, and there are things that the neighbors are saying? So, for me, I won't be approving this on my part today.
Thank you. Christina, you wanted to jump in with some information on a follow-up?
No, there was just mention of trailers, and so I was asking if, he was asking us how we knew of trailers, and our neighbor has multiple trailers. I mean, when you come up our driveway, there's multiple, and that's fine, because there's not, I'm sure, restriction against that in the neighborhood. So I'm not complaining about that, but I am saying, it's commonplace, like right next door, they have multiple. So, not that we want that on our property anyways, but there's not a law that states you can't have, whatever, five, six, seven trailers, and four-wheelers, and whatever, right outside your door. Our property is clean. It is beautiful, it is well-maintained. In fact, the neighbor helps us maintain. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know, it's a little over the top.
Thank you. Other members of the commission? I am going to go back to the audience, too. Go ahead.
What would happen if on number 15 in recommendations, if we put on there, this conditional use permit will be reviewed in six months? To see what happens? To give them benefit of the doubt?
Are you suggesting and change one of the conditions?
Well, possibly, if something like this would work with the rest of the group.
You're throwing it on the table to the other commission members, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else from the commission before I go back to the audience want to comment?
If Brittany could tell us the steps that are taken if complaints are given, how long the process changes to get it back into compliance, or how that would work, you know, it would be kind of like the commentary, let's give them six months, but without doing that, if there were continued complaints, can you go through the quick process of what we need to do, or what you could do at the county level?
Sure, so it would go in front of our ordinance enforcement, he would go out and see if the complaints are substantiated, he would work with the landowners to mitigate those complaints. If they aren't mitigated, then we would schedule a revocation hearing in front of this commission. So they would be notified, the neighbors would be notified, and then this commission, it would be in front of this commission. That's worst-case scenario, if they can't be mitigated.
Thank you, Brittany. Now, before I go back to the audience, I wanted to let you know what the chair is trying to do here. I had asked Deb to wait for her comments until we were in discussion, and I had also pointed an order on Christine, that's why I went in that order. Now, I'm asking anyone from the audience, the chair in no way wants to limit your opportunity to discuss this, but I would ask you to limit it to opinions, short, brief, whatever you would like to say, if you care to come back up again and reply. The audience, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Desil Peterson, again. If this is approved with the way it's drafted, then they're going to be able to have all of these beds in this house, but they're only gonna be limited to six overnight guests. How in the world does that get enforced? When they have all those beds? I mean, it's just asking for trouble. I think at a minimum, you should have it continued for them to remove those extra beds, so that we do not have this problem. It's an invitation to violate the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Desil? Excuse me, Desil.
I go along with what Ethel, for what you're saying-
It's Desil.
Excuse me, yeah. And talking with Brittany on this, it sounds like it doesn't really matter how many beds you actually have in there, it has to do with how many people you're gonna have in there.
But if you have all of these beds-
I agree.
You're inviting those people to come in.
Well-
That's what, and you show those photographs on V R B O?
Yep.
And the people come and look and say, oh, look, there's all this room, we can bring in a family of 11.
But it appears there's no law against that, I guess, is what it sounds like to me. Because I agree with you, I mean, to me, if they've got that many beds, you're probably gonna fill them sooner or later, but if that's not how the law is written, that's probably not gonna work.
I'm not sure that you need to have a specific law to do that, because one of the problems that Pennington County has is enforcement. You have, I think, basically one enforcement person, and he enforces all of the ordinances. So, to put in place a system, a structural enforcement, by limiting the number of beds, this is a rental facility, I wouldn't do it in a single-family home, they have the right. But here, you are saying there can be only six people, so you should put in place a structural means of enforcing them, and that is to remove those beds. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, you can.
All right, two things. One, we are going to be, of course, increasing our wastewater, but number two, when you search platform, so you search Airbnb or V R B O, right now it's state six, so we will not come up in searches. And analytics, it's all analytics, so could people find us? Maybe, but that's not how it works. They say, I have four adults and two children, I'm looking for April 12th to the 15th, and whoever is available that accommodates six people, that's who shows up in a search.
So if they're looking for eight, or they're looking for 10, our property will not show up as available to them, because it doesn't meet their requirement. And additionally, if it's a family of six, you could have a mother and father sleeping in the king bedroom, and four kids in the bunk room.
Or you could have six girlfriends, that all want their own bed. So it's just, that's why you set these up in a variety of ways, because you don't know your guest.
Right.
And our intention, like we said, is be that 10, if 10 is our max, then that would be our intention, but we have to get a system, and then-
An additional C U P for that, but we are asking for an approval under the current C U P for six. Because that's what our system will allow.
Thank you. Anyone else from the floor, the audience? Any other discussion from the commission? There is a motion on the floor. Go ahead, Deb.
Chairman, I can appreciate the motion. Again, I'm not against V H Rs or rentals, anything to do with that, but all of this, for me, doesn't make sense on the timing and the rules and regulations that should have been followed based on this vacation home rental. So, people have a pattern, if they follow rules and regulations, they do, and if they don't, to me, there ends up being a lot more problems. I've been in politics for a long time, and I'll keep saying that, you either do or you don't, you want to do it right, or you don't, and if you're in the business of what you're talking about, and what you're permitted, and what you actually want to rent out to others, or do for others, and you're not doing it right yourself, that's hard for me to say that you would comply with any other rules and regulations based on it. So, trailers, things like that, that's not my issue. It's health concerns to do with safety, health, and welfare of this property. So, again, I appreciate you listening to me today.
All right, any other discussion on two items? Go ahead, Kevin.
I appreciate that you started taking action right after you realized that there was a C U P that was being terminated. I guess what sticks as something that is a thorn in my side is that you knowingly continued to rent property in a non-compliance situation. You knew the C U P was canceled, and yet you continued to rent property outside of the confines of what that entitles. And I think that's the hardest pill I'm having to swallow right now, is if you're willing to knowingly violate these rules, that main rule, how, you know, how can we trust that you're gonna comply with all the others? And then with, yeah, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Kevin. I wanted to address two things before we get this to a vote. One, we had right at the beginning, some conversation on a continuance because of additional information that was submitted. It's time to comment on it, or do something on it if you want to. And the second thing was, we also had one of the commissioners bring up that a change of the conditions that were being offered to us in, switching, I believe, from one year to six months, is that correct, Mike? Is that clear with everyone?
(coughs)
Then it's time. Anyone else, before we vote on this, want to speak? Staff? Anyone? Okay. All in favor of motion, signify by saying aye. Oh, just a moment, I'm gonna have the motion reread, it's a little old right now. Can you do that for me, Jerry?
It's just the motion to approve.
Per staff's recommendation, conditional use permit 22-52.
Correct.
Everyone understands?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Got that, Jerry? All opposed?
No.
No.
I have one.
No, it's Karen.
There was there two.
Aye. Yeah. Yeah. So it's two. Two ayes, four noes.
Yeah. Let's have a roll call quick.
Charlie.
Uh, no.
Karen?
Yes.
Kevin Burton?
No.
Mike Lewis?
No.
Kevin Keane?
Yes.
And, no.
Four to two. It does not.
Okay. Motion fails, four to two. On to item number fifteen.
Charlie, did you let them know?
Did you hear the vote?
We did. Four to two, not to approve. Is that correct?
Yes. They were asking whether I, I had done that, and I had not done that, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item fifteen is rezon rz22-32. It is to rezone 9.78 acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant and landowner is Shirley Brownell and Robert Brownell, and the surveyor and, and agent is KTM Design Solutions. Location of the property is 13396 Silver Mountain Road. Again, it involves 9.78 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use residential. Access is off Silver Mountain Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Future land use has the subject property as rural residential district, and that's what the applicants are proposing to go to, which requires a minimum three-acre lot size, a maximum single-family residence density of .33 per acre. Setbacks are 25 feet from all property lines. Predominant land use is large lot residential, and utilities are private. Existing zoning within one-half mile to the north, you have open space, which is forest service land. To the south, you have agriculture, rural residential, open space, and highway service. To the east, again, you have open space, which is forest service land. And to the west, you have agriculture district, open space, rural residential, and planned unit development. Future land use within one-half mile, again, to the north, you have open space. To the south, you have rural residential, open space, and highway service. To the east, you have open space. And to the west, you have rural residential and open space. Predominant land uses within one-half mile. To the, to the north, you have agriculture slash public. To the south, you have residential and public. To the east, you have agriculture and residential. And to the west, you have agriculture and residential. This was routed around for your department review. There were no major comments or concerns ever received. Access is off Silver Mountain Road, which is a 24-foot wide paved road, and a 66-foot wide access easement or public right-of-way. Currently, on the subject property, there is a 10-foot easement that would need to be improved, which will be done through the plodding process. The applicant has proposed to subdivide the lots into two. Layout plan LPL 22-59 is being reviewed by staff. Future land use of the property is rural residential, therefore comprehensive plan is not required. Infrastructure, again, will be addressed during the plodding process. The existing road will need to be improved, and this right-of-way will need to be dedicated, or the applicant will need to obtain an improved subdivision regulation variance to meet those requirements. And the request appears to be in harmony with current zoning, future land use designations, and the comprehensive plan viewed at 2040. Again, the future land use is rural residential. None is what the applicant is proposing to rezone to. So with that, staff is recommending approval of rezon rz22-32.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody?
Chairman.
Go ahead.
On a comprehensive plan change, they have to, do they have to pay for that?
They, they would. If they had to apply for one, they didn't have to apply for one.
How much do they cost?
If you run it concurrently with the rezon, it's an extra $120. The $120 is for the sign and for the mailing list. They bring our sign back. They get the $100 back, so it's 20, $20 at the end of the day.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't know why I forgot that, Cody, but thank you.
Another question is for Cody. Cody, I got one. I always enjoy your little breakout of the lots. Instead, I'm looking at KTM's drawing. And basically, it looks like we're breaking out two different occupies from a unoccupied? Is that correct?
So what it is, is they currently, on the property right here, there's, there is a single-family residence right here.
All right.
And they're subdividing it into, and they're going to put another house over here. It's a mother-son who own the property, so they're putting another residence over on that property.
But this drawing shows the, I guess, you usually had lots and what each one came to the size. I missed your little extra blurb you always threw in here.
Yeah. So lot one will be 10 acres. So lot one will be on the
Okay.
Western half. Lot two will be 9.78 acres. So this is what they're rezoning, this highlighted portion right here. This, since this is 10 acres, it'll remain the agriculture district. And since this is under the 10 acres, they had to rezon, so they're rezoning it to the, what the comprehensive plan shows.
Residential. Okay. Because of the size?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Caught me up. Thank you. Any other questions for Cody? Anybody from the audience here to speak on this matter?
I have a question for.
Oh, do you? I'm sorry, Kevin.
So you're going to residential rather than ranchette because the future planning is planning for residential district?
Correct. And the area is, a lot of the area around there is rural residential. So to go with, with the current zoning in the area, that's what they're requesting. Everything in that area in the future is going to be ruled residential.
Yeah. It doesn't look like any of the lots are currently in that three-acre size. My, my eye.
Brittany?
Sorry. Brittany Muller, Planning Director, just to answer some of Kevin's questions with that. There was a plot to the south on Silver Mountain Road, and when they did that plot, I walked that area. The topography is pretty difficult to get some smaller lots in to get actual buildable sites. So that's probably why you're not seeing those smaller lot sizes in some of those areas.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience here to speak on this matter? Care would address the motion.
Move approval based on staff recommendations. One second.
Moved and second to approve per staff's recommendation, rezon rz22-32. Discussion. Discussion from the audience, from the staff. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Onto item, and you've got that one, don't you, 16?
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item 16 is rezon rz22-31. It is to rezon 13.55 acres from agriculture district to ranchette district. The applicant is Argyle Properties LLC Anita Lee and the agent is Jim Peterson. Both are in the audience if there are any questions. Location of the property is 23911 Hidden Valley Trail. Again, involves 13.55 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Hidden Valley Trail, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Current zoning is agriculture district, which requires a 10-acre lot size, maximum single-family residence. Density is .01 with 25-foot setbacks from all sides. Future land use and the proposed zoning are both ranchette district, which requires a five-acre lot, a maximum single-family resident density of .2, and setbacks are 25 feet from all property lines. And the predominant uses are agriculture and residential. Utilities are private. So current zoning within one-half mile to the north, you have agriculture district, rural residential, and suburban residential, suburban residential. To the south, you have agriculture and open space. To the east, you have open space. To the west, you have agriculture, rural residential, and suburban residential. Future land use, to the north, you have suburban residential and rural residential. To the south, you have ranchette and open space. To the east, you have open space. And the west, you have ranchette, rural residential, and suburban residential. And land uses within one-half mile in all directions are agriculture and residential. Access is off Hidden Valley Trail, which is approximately 16-foot wide gravel road. It's a 40-foot wide private e-mont, and it'll have private water and sewer. This was routed around for your department review. The Hidden Valley Road District commented and said, we are in receipt of a routing packet for Argyle Properties. At this time, we're asking to see the new layout packet so we can make an informed decision regarding this request. We are still very concerned about the fire danger and, and water situation. Gail Schmidt, Fire Chief of Rockville Fire Department, has expressed her concerns to Cody Sack in a phone message as well as an email. And those concerns have not changed since our last meeting. The applicants were proposing to subdivide the property into three lots. Layout plan LPL 22-53 was approved by staff. For, for that layout plan, condition number six states that prior to filing a MYLR, that register deeds, the applicant attains an approved rezon and comprehensive plan amendment. On December 6th, 2022, the Board of Commissioners denied comprehensive plan amendment CA 22-21 to change the future land use from agriculture to rural residential district, and rezon rz22-28 to rezon the subject property from agriculture to rural residential district. The applicants will need to submit a new layout plan to subdivide the property into two lots, and rezoning the subject property will, would allow the applicants to subdivide the property into two lots. The current size of the lot is 13 acres, so if they subdivide it into two for ranchette, most of the lots would be above five acres. The future land use for the subject property is ranchette and rural residential. Therefore, comprehensive plan amendment is not required to the ranchette zoning district. Ranchette district allows the uses of agriculture slash farm reforms and large lot residential. Staff finds no significant issues with the request, as appears to be in harmony with existing land use within the area and is supported by the existing roads and infrastructure, and the majority of the properties within half-mile are large lot residential. So with that, staff is recommending approval of rezon 22-31.
Questions for Cody? Cody, I see that your interdepartmental review listed two replies, apparently, one from the road district, one from the fire chief. Or did it come through one? I guess I didn't totally understand that.
Um, so that, oh, so, wow, sorry. That comment just came from Hidden Valley Road District. The comments that she's referring to is, I, I did receive, I had a phone conversation with the Rockville Fire Department on the previous request, and there was concerns about hot, the road not having hydrants and subdividing the property. But there's nothing new specifically for this request from the fire department. So they're just referencing that previous phone conversation. This was heard before the planning commission back in November and early December. And I know that the planning commission had some concerns with three lots compared to two lots. They're asking for three when they could have two. So that's what the applicants are back here requesting, is just to be able to subdivide into two lots.
Okay. And I understand that your discussion with the applicant is changing it to two lots. If we rezon this thing to the ranchette, could the layout plot come in to five acres and a three-plus?
No.
Okay.
They would have to, any, if they came with a layout plan, their layout plan would have to match the zoning. So if you were to rezon this to ranchette, any future layout plan would require them to be five acres or more.
Each lot would be more than five acres?
Correct.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to clarify. Thank you. Any other questions for Cody while we've got him up here? Okay. And I understand the applicants here?
Correct.
Okay. Well, and we're supposed to ask, Jim, are you the representative for the applicant? Would you please come and introduce yourself, then we, if we've got questions, we can ask you?
I thought you'd probably lead me to the end.
Well, maybe I am.
Like the other. Yeah. But I'd be happy to be at the end as well. And back to come up again. Yeah, Jim Peterson, the agent for this, we were here before you before. I think you guys probably remember that a little bit. The interesting thing about this property is it has two future land use designated, and so we went with the other land use before that was denied by this party, four to three. And so we're just coming back to do the ranchette, which would allow that property to be divided into two parcels. And there would be, you know, it's 13, so they're five plus, so they're, to answer your question, would only be able to be two parcels. Unless it was 15. Yeah.
Any other questions for Jim while we've got him up? He will still have the right to reply to any matters. Thank you. I do have a speaker request on this. Darcy Gunderson.
Good morning. My name is Darcy Gunderson. I live across the street from this property at 23896 Hidden Valley Trail. As previously stated before, when we came before you and you guys denied this, there are several reasons not to rezon this agriculture property. We are in an agriculture community, and nothing has changed, and we still have the issues of fire suppression and the lack of water to put out any fires. We have no fire hydrants, and this property has no cistern or has any large bodies of water to aim it in that event. The road is still a single-lane road with limited maintenance due to the limited funds received to maintain it and plow snow. This road is the only road in and out of the community, and if something were to happen between the end and the beginning of the road, those individuals would have no other access to get out. And then another reason is the water. Water is a very big reason for not granting the rezoning in this area. We are currently in a drought, and the water tables are very low. At least two families have to haul water to meet their basic needs, and this includes our property, which, like I stated before, is directly across from the subject property. I don't know about you, but I really hate hauling water, especially when it's 20 below. That is not fun at all. And, you know, that's something I have to occasionally do now is haul water, and I, I just don't enjoy doing that. If rezoning is permitted, this allows Ms. Lee to break the property into more lots, which could either add another rental property or allow her to sell the land so someone else can build another home, dig another well, and another septic system, which will increase the use of water that is already limited in this area. We are currently dealing with this now. The property next to mine, that I share a fence line towards the west side that goes towards Neck Yoke, was approved to be rezoned a few years ago. The 10-acre lot at 13531 Neck Yoke Road was divided into two five-acre lots. The owner sold the five-acre lots with the house and plans on building another home, which will add another well and another septic, septic system into the area. And about the same time this happened, the property across the street directly from this property at 13542 Neck Yoke Road was approved for rezoning. And that property was subdivided, and the owner sold that lot, and the new owners are currently building a home, adding an additional well and septic system. This brings in two additional homes, which will tap into the water system and put more of a strain on it. So when does this stop? I have talked with the Water Reclamation Office and South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources about wells and water usage in our area, and was told that it does make a difference on how many wells there are in the actual water usage in the community. And they do affect those water tables. So with these additional wells, our current drought, a hardship is being created for all of us in this area. Therefore, if you approve this rezon, you are adding to this hardship and setting us all up in this community to fail.
Questions for Darcy? Darcy, do I remember that you and your husband are involved with the road district as well from the previous meeting?
We are in the road district, yes.
That's what I. That's what I thought.
Yes.
Doesn't an additional lot give you more to collect, in theory?
Well, in theory, um, and, and I, you know, I suspect, you know, with this, um, um, future land use, why they're going to the ranchette and residential is because, you know, taxes will be increased. So, you know, um, you pay more for taxes on a ranchette than you do on agriculture. Um, but, you know, that's the usage on the road, but, you know, like I said, the biggest issue is the water. You know, I have to haul water, the people down below, um, the beakers, they have to haul water, they haul it every day. I don't have to do it every day, but, you know, it's just me and my husband there, and we don't use a lot of water, but, you know, from what I understand is the more wells you add, the more it takes away from that water system. And so that might increase my, you know, me having to go in home or water, so, you know, it's.
And just to clarify on the water, you hauled water before the other two lots that you're talking about being developed right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so have the other people in that, that area.
Okay. Any other questions for Darcy?
Attorney Chairman.
Yep.
So, Darcy, when you talked to DA NR, did they say that, um, they were limiting the water? If these people wanted to do a well in this area, they would say they, they couldn't do it because there wasn't enough water?
No, they said they don't really do that, because, you know, I was talking with them about that. Um, they can just basically state that it does make a difference when you keep adding wells into an area that it does take away from existing wells, you know? The water, you know, just like a, a lake, if you cycle, cycle out from a lake and stuff, you know, it's gonna get lower, the more people that, um, take out of it.
Right, and, and maybe the aquifers are different in this area? I guess if, if they can't say by DA NR that this area doesn't have enough water, I guess I'd have to be shown or that on this property, that this well and the well water usage is going to limit everybody else in the area, but it's not just this area that we have problems if we do.
And we are kind of unique because we are on, um, a lot of fractures, because there's a lot of rock in the area, you know, hence Rockerville. Um, and then that water does flow differently, and, and, you know, it may be too deep where you can't get to it, or, you know, it, it's just really hard to say, and that's why, you know, they couldn't really say they can't really limit because it's, it's really hard to judge.
Well, Ms. Darcy, they just told you basically the same thing that we'll say too.
Yeah.
We can't really limit it because there might be a fracture, there might be.
Yep.
Water usage in that area, so your concern is, is a good concern.
Right.
But to say on a property that, okay, this planning commissioner or commissioners can't approve your property because you might or might not have water.
Sure.
They have to prove that, and they won't be able to do development if they don't have enough water, so.
Right.
Um, on that area, so, um, you understand.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand, it just, you know, and, and I think if, um, when this property was purchased, because she hasn't owned it very long, she's never lived there. And her, I, I believe her plan all along was to, to do this, to break it up and, you know, sell it off into smaller lots, and, you know, and, you know, it's about the money, I'm sure, but, um, you know, if she would have checked around and talked with neighbors, um, you know, she probably would have found out a lot of this information that, you know, there are people in this area that are hauling water. Uh, we really don't want to have the properties broken down into smaller lots, you know? I mean, that's one reason we all move out there, because, you know, it's an agriculture area, our neighbors aren't sitting on top of each other, right, and, I mean.
And, and I totally understand that, but I also, I, I look both ways on, uh, property rights and people being able to do what they want with their land. If she bought it, th- those are her property rights. They also, the people that are gonna move on those lots do their due diligence to check and make sure there's water.
Correct.
I mean, that's the bottom line.
Correct.
So, um, I am listening today, um, what you're saying, but I also have an understanding of people selling their property or people buying it, that hopefully we saw that rules and regulations do make a difference, and looking up on what you're buying or what you have is, is huge.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, nope, I agree.
I thank you for your comments today, they are good comments, Ms. Darcy.
Darcy, just one more question. Are you, like your own well, is it considered a deep well, deeper than a hundred feet?
Yes, our well is about seven-hundred-and-fifty feet.
Okay, what about, just, and I ask you because you're involved in the road district, are most of the wells, deep wells, then, in excess of a hundred feet?
Um, I believe, um, there's some that are four, four hundred, I mean, I know the one neighbor to the side of me, hers is like two-hundred-and-eighty feet, um.
So they vary?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And how many active property owners are in your road district now? Eleven, was that it?
Uh.
Before this?
Two, three, four, five, six.
I won't hold you to it.
Seven, eight, nine, there's nine of us.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Jim, any comments you wanna make before we open this for a motion and discussion?
Well, I think you had.
Oh, we have one more. I don't have a speaker request for him, sorry. Thank you. Michelle.
I'm back. Um, so my name is Michelle Maline Marwani. I live at two-three-nine-two-one Hidden Valley Trail, which is the subject property directly to the south of the proposed agreement, so this is literally in my backyard. Um, we've been in this house for the last thirty years. We've seen, I feel like I'm preaching to the choir, but Deb, you haven't been here the whole time, so, um, so I guess I, I will reiterate some of what we've talked about in the, the past when we've been here. The registered has unanimously, um, expressed our concerns every time, with the exception, obviously, of the developer. This is, um, this is an attempt to develop for profit a piece of agricultural property to for-profit, non-owner occupied development property. We have valid concerns about water supply, about fire. Um, one of the, the comments that was made previously when we were here is about the house that burned down on the road districts, and then the fire chief said they just couldn't get water to it. We don't have enough water. And there's been a, a house that burnt down as a result of that. Um, at that time, the, the emergency vehicles were in our pasture, which isn't, I mean, neither here nor there for us, but try to get.
Michelle, can I get you to move the mic, just, maybe it's my ears today, that mic hasn't been doing very well, thank you.
That's okay. I'm a teacher, I'll put my teacher voice on. Um, so the emergency vehicles were in our pasture because they can't get through, as Darcy mentioned, this is a, a one-lane road. Um, we have valid concerns about the increased transient inhabitants, the traffic. The approval that was made for the vacation home on this property, um, allows for eight vehicles with four guests, so you have now taken nine homes on the road district, and we now have the potential of having twelve more vehicles every day on our road. So to say that, um, the, the property values will go up, just what was you've already approved, we're doubling the amount of traffic potentially. And they've talked about the desire to rent the property at least a hundred-and-fifty days a year, so multiply that by twelve vehicles a day that don't live there. That's really concerning, and I don't think that any additional road district money can actually make up for the twelve vehicles for the vacation home rental that was already approved, and now the request to build it or to subdivide and possibly build another. The, you know, the, the developers' plans have changed over and over again, just based on what we've heard from representatives. Initially, they were going to live on site, then they were gonna subdivide and build two more vacation homes, then there was a report that they were gonna subdivide and sell off the lots. But what has it changed is the lack of planning. You've all heard that the, the garage is built right on the section line, that wouldn't have taken much for anyone to figure out prior to purchasing. Um, the lack of foresight in making an offer contingent on approval of, of rezoning and actually being able to have vacation properties and subdividing. It feels really disrespectful in our largely agricultural neighborhood, the, the brown that's up there. You know, that was, that was never supposed to have a house on it, that's why the lot's so small. That was supposed to only be a one lot, so I would, I would reiterate what Darcy just said, when, when do we stop? Like, just changing the rules a little bit every time? This is current ag land, this is future use ag land. Nobody, nobody prefers one, this is what, what it was going into the purchase, so we're not putting a hardship on anybody and asking you to leave it as is. We've taken great blow when you guys approved the vacation home rental. Twelve cars in an ag, in an ag, agricultural development. Um, the developers' representative has stated to commission that the property was chosen specifically to the proximity of local attractions. This was for profit. This is ag land that was purchased to become development property. I understand property rights, and you get to follow the rules, but we followed those rules, and we, we have to live with the consequences of this. Um, the, the developer has already rented the property, before she had approval from the county. They have stated that the Morton Building does not have water or living quarters. Um, I have documentation here on the listing, and I will provide to each of you. The Morton Building has living quarters and running water, and they stood before you and they lied. That's why this is going down so hard, because every part of this feels so sketchy and manipulative. It feels like a, a developer is bullying their way into our community and threatening our way of life. And I feel like I'm getting a tone, but I'm really emotional, I'm sorry. So why are we dredging all that up? Um, these plans appear to be sketchy at best, deliberately misleading at worst, again, when they stood before you and said the Morton Building did not have water, it has, it has living quarters on it. That's a big deal because the septic system isn't built for that. Um, there's no due diligence with contingent offer, no survey to determine the garage and purchase on the section line, zero pre communication with the road district, and we said that our concerns were imagined, that our worries were, were imagined fears, which is, it doesn't feel very, um, imagined. When my family lived through the, the Battle Creek fire and lost all of our equipment and couldn't get out, that's not an imagined fear. It's not an imagined fear that Darcy has to haul water, that beakers have to haul water, that, that well on to the west of this property came out dry. It is not an imagined fear that the USGS says that absolutely, positively wells are impacted by increasing the number of wells around it and can lead to dry wells. That's not an imagination. Um, the one thing that I would ask, um, and this is my, this is a little procedural, teachers, so I break papers a lot, um, on the application, they said that, um.
Can I ask you, Michelle, just take a breath? Can you, we're getting a feedback in here. We're getting feedback in here from that mic.
Should I plug this one?
That's all right, just wait, it needs to turn down.
Could be my emotion coming.
Oh, that's all right. You probably got a little louder while you were on, but I just didn't, that isn't a pleasant thing for any of us sitting and listening to. Thank you. Go ahead, Michelle, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay, thank you, I don't wanna yell at you at all. So on the application, um, it says that the surrounding zoning to the north is urban and to the west is urban? I don't understand that. It doesn't seem like the paperwork was proper, properly completed.
In the past, we've usually allowed the staff to come up and reply on those stories.
Cody, Cody Sac, if I'm a mental planner? Uh, so that says residential. Um, if you look to the north, the yellow is rural residential, that brown is suburban residential. You look to the west, that lot comes down, so there is some suburban residential still to the west that touches the west property line, and zoning has rural residential to the west, so then putting residential on there.
No, it says urban. It says urban there, and it says urban there.
Okay, so the, the application does say urban, I guess, um, if the applicant doesn't know, uh, I, I, I don't know what that would have to really do with what we're discussing here. Um, they could've came in and put planning and development because they didn't know, and staff would've corrected it.
We have in our packet does not refer to the urban, Michelle, is what.
Correct, yes.
The information I was sent, certified was, so that, so this is the information that we received. So that's, that's why it, nothing seems well planned. They don't, there's no urban, we're ag. Um, so it's very frustrating. It's very frustrating that every part of this, there's been some sort of manipulation of.
Michelle, just a second, Cody. I don't think manipulation isn't, you can have a clerical error or a, an applicant install a, a wrong, uh, comment in a space, and that appears to be what Cody's trying to tell us, the urban should not have been put there.
So, uh, Cody Sac, if I'm a mental planner, I don't think anything was cert, certified, the only thing that's in certified is the notification letters, and if you can post for, if you could show where that says urban, then we can have a discussion, um.
And our packets don't indicate urban.
No, correct, and, and again, when people come in, they might not understand, like, our world and our zoning, um, for reference, um, you know, it's stated that this is an agriculture area, there's only really four or five lots in there that are actually taxed ag, everything else is residential, but it's still referred to as an agriculture area. So, but in our world, it's residential agriculture mixed, so, I, I, applications and what we actually put in our packet, it could be two different things, so, thank you.
And yet, that's what we received. So, no, I'm not saying that somebody didn't make a mistake, I'm just saying it's indicative of what we've seen. There's, there's no living quarters in the Morton Building, so we don't have to add the septic system. It's the, we're gonna, um, we're gonna live on property. It's the fact that with every step, that the story just changes when, just about the time you get things figured out, um, something changes, and the application says urban, um, for zoning in the north and zoning in the west. So, and then, lastly, this is a, perhaps a procedural question as well, uh, we received the, the certified letter for this meeting came on, it was sent on January twelfth, so that was six working days before this meeting, and I'm not sure about the, that requirement for.
Cody Sac, if I'm a mental planner, uh, state statute says ten days.
Is it working days? I called and asked and she didn't know.
It is ten days, it says ten days from the meeting, it doesn't have anything to do with business days or anything, it's ten days.
Okay. Um, and then, two more things. In the certified letter, um, it says any person interested may appear and shall cause if there be any why such request should, should or should not be granted. I actually called the planning department to ask about notice, um, and I asked about what the legal definition of cause was, and the person I spoke with did not know what that meant, she just said it's verbiage that has been used for years. I was directed, um, to talk to the director, where I left a voicemail asking for, um, clarification. That was on January eighteenth as of today, nobody has, um, called me back.
Michelle, just, uh, Megan, let me answer that. The, our department, and we don't have a responsibility, uh, to have your review made for you on what you see as legal, illegal, under, misunderstood or understood, and that's what they were doing. As far as returning the phone call, uh, I'm sorry if that wasn't on a timely manner, and things do get in the way, but the staff, uh, has a certain amount of frustration when they have to explain to people that oppose something, uh, that they are, they, they can't qualify a legal, uh, a matter for you. You, cause is based upon what you and your, uh, representatives see called. You, cause is based upon what you and your, uh, representatives seek cause.
Okay. That's all I needed.
Megan?
I'm Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So that's just notice. It's not actually in our ordinance. So you're not legally bound by anything that's in the notice aside from sending it. Um, it basically is just saying that you can show up and say why you don't want it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
So in conclusion, I ask for your attention to your comprehensive plan. Um, again, this is L U H 3.2. The county should provide for stable neighborhoods by minimizing adverse effects from conflicting land uses. This is a conflicting land use. Subdividing this land. Um, and the natural conclusion is that there will be more building, that there will be more vehicles, that there will be without question, the USGS, and I'm happy to bring it back at the commission meeting, the full report on the Minnalausa aquifer, that that is highly subject to drought and we are at the mercy of what's happening around us with the drought and other wells being, um, pulling from those reserves. So we respectfully ask you to keep your word. We ask you to minimize the adverse effects from conflicting land uses. It's ag land. Based on all of the information, this is solely for profit. This is not a necessity.
Question for Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. Jim?
Hi, Jim Peterson. I'd like to address a couple of things. Um, so first of all, this meeting was continued. Uh, you didn't have a quorum at the last. So our notifications went out on time, just as a point of clarification. Um, the change that's happened here is because we were looking for something of higher density and we weren't given that. So there's no, there's multiple applications here, um, on several different fronts. So in terms of if there's a clerical error, there's probably three other ones that weren't, uh, and all these people are same people. Um, and with regards to water, I keep hearing about water. And so, you know, I went ahead and looked at one, two, seven tax IDs around that area. And of those seven, and, and these wells who are drilling, drilled, excuse me, one is in 1986 and most of them were the early 2000s. Okay? Two of them, one gallon a minute. Okay? One of them, three gallons a minute. One of them, six gallons a minute. And then the other two, 25 gallons a minute and 30 gallons a minute, all within the same area. So when they talk about a water system, that's over my head because I know there is no water system. It's fractures where you get your water and they can depend. You can go across the street and you'll drill a well that's 100 feet and then go across the street and you'll drill a well at 750 feet. So I, I think there needs to be some real clarification on that. There is no aquifer that you're hitting. Uh, it's fractures and certainly that can depend on the weather, but this has a history. As they've been saying, that there's water and they've been, you know, i- if you have a low flowing well, typically what you would do is put in a cistern, have it go into the cistern and put a 10 gallon a minute pump out of the cistern to feed your house. So it, this is not unusual, uh, throughout the hills.
Question for Jim. Oh, I'm sorry.
Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
So you have seven wells that are between one gallon per minute to 30 gallons per minute?
Put well logs on the state side.
So based on D A N R, what, what does it have to be? Or does it have to be a certain limit?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not aware of any limit.
So seven people moved in that area without enough water based per minute. It sounds like, um, maybe not seven, but I'll keep saying this, if the D A N R does not say that we cannot basically, um, as they can, tell people that they can't build because there's not enough water. I mean, I like approving things with enough water and fire suppression, but if they are hauling water or they are doing stuff based on that suppression, based on those issues, I mean, I cannot deny a person because of water. Um, we have a lot of those different areas in Pennington County, unfortunately. The main thing I need to know is once they do their plat or once they're doing their, um, building there, and we have done this before, they had to, um, have water storage. So, um, again, it sounds like from other people that there's a lot of areas in that area that don't have enough water suppression, suppression, but they also have figured out different ways in order to, um, buy that land and, uh, be able to live there. So I can't really limit it myself on that unless I see more information that basically, um, I can't deny it because we're splitting two lots. I didn't, I can't remember if I voted for or against on the, on the others, but and I'm, I'm limited on the V H R either because actually V H R is less water because it's, it's commercial, basically. We say it's not commercial, but it is. It's less water. It's less road usage. It's a lot less of everything because they're not having somebody live there full time. When you have someone live there full time, you already know your water's going to be more. Um, if you have somebody, uh, using the road 12 times a year, um, 12 times it's, it's set for V H R. Uh, someone had said earlier, it's less. It's not, it's not more. Um, depending on how many times you go there and back, I understand, but, um, based on factual information, it has been proven that it's commercials, less water and, um, less usage of the road. So just depending on what kind of businesses in there for, um, water and, um, road use. So.
Chair, can I ask Cody a question?
Just a moment. I was going to reply to what, that Deb, when the, the property owner submits to the state regarding the water of the well, they submit one time. If they own it 50 years, they submit one time voluntarily. And it's done by the person that drills the well. As far as the quantity of water that comes out of that well, that isn't what they're looking at. They're looking at the quality of the water that comes out that well.
Right.
So it's the property owner's, uh, responsibility in regards to making decisions about the quantity. Or where the location of the well is at and to meet other ordinance acts.
And that's kind of what I'm saying is that it's based, you know, um, we don't really base it on that to a certain extent until they decide they want to, you know, put a bunch of houses and we go, okay, you have one well.
I was going to tease you. First time I ever heard angelic noises while you were testifying.
Anyway, it wasn't really a question except for the seven ID wells, um, and that you got that from the D A N R?
Uh, my, my information came from the state well log. You can get online right now and go look at it. I have the tax ID numbers.
And you have a question for?
Cody, yep.
Cody.
Um, so some of the ancillary statements that were made that really don't pertain to this, for, this, um, you know, what we're asking for right now, but Cody, you were on, you're, you and your staff were on site in both structures and know the home and the garage. Well, and you know what's going on in both of those structures?
Uh, Cody Sacramondo Planner, yes. I was in the, I was in the garage. The quote unquote, living space is a sliding glass door, uh, that has, there's a sink and a fridge in there. There's a bathroom that had a shower and the shower hasn't looked like it's been used in years. Not saying that someone hasn't used it. Um, but it looked like an office in a garage or a, uh, man cave. So.
Thank you. Anything else, Jim? Thank you, Jim. Commission, want to move on this matter?
Mr. Chair, it, last time, the reason this didn't make it didn't have anything to do with fire roads. It had to do with going from ag to rural residential. They've come back now. They want to rezone from ag to ranch act. Future land use, the comprehensive plan is ranch act. It would appear to me that they've jumped through the hoops. It looks good to me.
Anybody else like to comment? I did note, and I, I don't know whether we can get this information in the future, but one of the, uh, folks testified that two of the parcels have been subdivided before this. Uh, and they're not necessarily all developed yet. Two of them. Go ahead, Cody.
Uh, Cody Sacramondo Planner, I'm not sure. Um, the addresses she gave off of Neck Yoke Road would make it sound like it's farther north.
Out of that area.
Out of this southern area. Um, I could be corrected. It sounds like.
Could it still be in their road district?
It could, it could very well be, um, but it would have to be farther up if that address was a Neck Yoke Road address.
Jim, do you have the answer to my question? Is that what you're coming from?
The address is that we were given at the time were Neck Yoke and there's no, nobody on this road district. First of all, this house is at the beginning of the road district off of Neck Yoke.
Right.
But the address wouldn't, there's nobody in the road district with a Neck Yoke address.
Thank you. All right. That's the only question I had won. You sure can come back up again.
Hi, Darcy Gunderson again. My property up there, 23896, that's where I live. On the other side is the one property that I was telling you about that was subdivided from 10 acres into two. We share that fence line.
Okay.
So her.
So it wasn't two properties that were divided, subdivided, just one?
No, there's another one across the street from her.
That's what I thought. I understood you said.
So, um.
Sorry, I pulled it up.
So my property is here. We share a fence line. This was 10 acres. You guys allowed them to rezone that. She then split it into two five acre lots. Okay? Then where her driveway comes out onto Neck Yoke, there's another house or another property right across the street from her that their driveway comes out onto Neck Yoke. So that's why they have the Neck Yoke address. They subdivided and sold the lot and then those people are currently building now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Darcy. Okay. Deb, you were about to say something before I.
I'm good. Thank you.
Answer the question. Go ahead.
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Chair, address the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, uh, move that we approve staff's recommendation of the rezone of, uh, R Z 22 dash 31.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation. I want to make sure I get the number for the record here. Right. R Z 22 dash 31 per staff's recommendation. Discussion. Anyone from the audience? Discussion before we move on. Hearing none? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Did you get that, Jerry?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, before we move on to number 16, did somebody want to take a break or have you all done that?
Let's do a five minute break.
Let's take a five minute break. Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 17 is Plan Dear Development Overlay U 22 dash 17 to allow Plan Dear Development Overlay a mixed use structure, a mobile home park and a multiple family, multiple family dwelling, excuse me. The applicant is David Allard, operating under Rabbit Creek West LLC. Location of the property is 12350 West Highway 44. It is 3.11 acres. Currently zoned commercial district, existing land uses, mobile home park. Access is off Highway 44 and there is special flood hazard area along with floodway on the property. zoning ordinance section 216 lists the following standards and requirements that shall apply in a PUD overlay district. They're on the screen. I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. Yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional uses permitted in a commercial zoning district. Number two, yes, the mobile home park and stick built structure have been on the subject property since the early 1970s. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are of a type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon the surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet Pennington County ordinance sections 303, 304, and 305, which govern mobile homes, mobile home parks, and multiple family dwellings. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is 3.11 acres. Number five, the subject property is owned by Rabbit Creek West LLC. The business, business is listed as manager managed and is in good standing according to the South Dakota Secretary of State. The applicant, David Allard, is listed as the agent. Number six, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are not designed to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And number seven refers us to the next table that I have up on the screen. It is, uh, the zoning ordinance list, section 510, list seven, criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. And I'll apologize in your packet, one through three are listed as yes. They should be listed as no. So I've corrected that on the screen. Uh, starting with number one, no, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Number two, no, the mobile home park and stick built structure have been in use since the early 1970s. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not substantially impair, diminish the uses, values, enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for persons, purposes already permitted. Number three, no, the uses requested are residential in nature and should not impede the normal orderly development or and improvement of the surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Number four, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet Pennington County zoning ordinance sections 303 and 305, which govern mobile home parks and multiple family dwellings. Details regarding the onsite wastewater treatment are going to be addressed later on in my analysis. Number five, yes, no changes are being proposed for the existing ingress and egress to West Highway 44. Number six, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district appear to meet Pennington County zoning ordinance sections 211, 216, 303, 304, and 305. And lastly, number seven, the future land use designation is commercial. The requested uses are consistent with the county's comprehensive plan viewed at 2040 with an approved PUD overlay. Some property history, I think we've gone over this, uh, in depth at previous meetings. Each one of the lots, there are seven of them, have a single wide mobile home as well as a carport and a shed. Lot number seven specifically has a single wide mobile home, uh, commercial office, an attached garage with living quarters, uh, two sheds and a carport. There are three current onsite wastewater treatment system operating permits on the property. There is a current flood plain development permit to place three sheds and there is an open violation for structures built without a building permit. Request posted out for interdepartmental review, emergency services, and the county address and coordinate their concerns about the addresses on the property. So that is, has been listed as a condition of approval that they come in and work with, uh, staff to get lots, each individual lot identified with its own address. Uh, county ordinance enforcement stated that approval of this request should clear all violations on the property. Staff's analysis of the request is that the existing mobile home, uh, again, mobile home and mobile home park and stick built structure have been on the property since the early 70s and been operated under conditional use permit 7104. Conditional use permit 7104 has been under review for revocation since October of 2022 due to multiple conditions of approval not being met. Since then, staff has worked with the applicant to bring the mobile home park into compliance, but discovered additional uses where, were either existing or proposed for the subject property that would require multiple conditional use permits. So on December 6th of 2022, the applicant applied for this request to bring property into compliance. The applicant is proposing a mixed use structure that will consist of a mobile home attached to a stick built structure. The stick built structure will include a residential dwelling, a garage, and a mobile home park manager office. Currently, the mobile home on lot seven connects to the stick built structure via an open walkway, but the applicant plans to permanently partition this and create its own separate dwelling unit. The commercial office is currently partitioned from the stick built living quarters with an unfinished piece of sheet rock. And as a condition of approval, that, that, uh, partition will need to be permanently walled off and finished. Mobile home park manager office is a use by right in a commercial zoning district. The applicant will need to apply for a building permit for the recently added finished space in the mixed use structure and pay any associated penalty fees. And this will resolve the county ordinance violation on the property. The applicant is also proposing to convert one of the mobile homes into a multiple family dwelling for rent as two separate units. Uh, just kind of one of the conditions of approval that wasn't being met for the conditional use permit 7104 was the carport. The conditional use permit seventy one oh four was the carports. And those seven carports are all one hundred and forty-four square feet, not anchored to the ground. But they are sufficiently weighted to prevent them from tipping over. Therefore, no building permits are required. On December twenty-second of twenty twenty-two, the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources permitted the continued use of the existing onsite wastewater treatment system. For seven mobile home spaces. Based on this approval and the administrative rules of South Dakota, staff calculating the applicant may have up to a maximum of twenty-four people utilizing the system. And this is included as a condition of approval. Details of the system cannot be verified, so the state and county approval will be required for any changes that are made to the existing system. If the system causes a groundwater pollution or if the system, uh, ever surfaces. And that's also addressed as a condition of approval. The planning department is unaware of any problems with the existing onsite wastewater treatment system as it appears to be adequate for the proposed uses. All that to say, staff recommends approval of Plan Junior Development Overlay twenty-two dash seventeen with conditions.
First, I want to say thank you to you, Jason, and the staff and the applicant for. Sitting down and pounding these things out for us. That's, that's a great addition to our review of it. I see that, and you referred to one, um, that I had, so I'm just going to bring it up while you did. And that was that you and the state are both, uh, in agreement in your condition and I'm the septic. I did look to see that because they're in acceptance of the septic situation as it is and only want it to be involved if it's altered. And, and that's, that's a good thing, I think, for both of us. And then the final thing, and I'll get off since I already asked one question, is that I think the six months. Has to be understood that we try to work at this, but if something should come up from either one of you, your, your side of it or the applicant's side. Then appropriately done, uh, we certainly will take that into effect if it can't be done in the six months. Anything else? Questions for Jason? Yep.
So bottom line, he's got his flood, floodplain permits, his building permits, and his onsite wastewater is all in compliance.
He'll need to come in for the building permits for the multiple family dwelling that he's converting the mobile home.
Okay.
And he's also going to have to come in for the finished space, um, in the stick built mixed use structure.
But other than that, he's in compliance.
Correct.
Thank you. That took a lot of work on both parts.
And as we see today, some things do take a lot of work, don't they?
They do.
All right. Anything else for Jason while we've got him up here? Thank you, Jason. Does the applicant care to? Is there any questions from the commission for the applicant? I have none. Okay. Chair, I'll address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I approve to a move to approve, excuse me. Plan unit development overlay PU twenty-two dash seventeen with sixteen conditions per staff's recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, Plan Unit Development Overlay PU twenty-two dash one seven. With seven, sixteen conditions. Discussion. From the audience.
One comment. I know it's been a long road for you, Mr. Allard. And, um, so hopefully you, you keep plugging along and if there's ever a problem within that six months, you let us know.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carried. Thank you. I've got to flip back to, so I know what number I'm having to call for. Oh, number eighteen.
So item number eighteen is the Vacation Home Rental Committee has, um, put together their proposal ordinance. And I sent it out to most of you. It's posted online. Um, I should say all of you. Um, it's posted online, so now we're looking at, um, scheduling a special meeting, um, to hear that ordinance amendment. I believe because of the history on this and all of the committees work on it. That it warrants a special meeting, um, outside of a regular planning commission meeting. Staff is anticipating it'll take two to three meetings, possibly at the planning commission level before it gets sent up to the Board of Commissioners. Um, so, and we're looking at the soonest is the week of February thirteenth. Um, that would be the soonest we could, um, have this special meeting, so Jerry has ample time to advertise it appropriately.
All right, just so, uh, my fellow members understand, Brittany had spoken to me about this. Um, mainly because I served on the committee as a guidance counselor more than anything. But anyway. Um, we need to do in our motion a, a number of things, and Brittany was in concurrence with this. One is select the date. Uh, and I would say with the understanding that after that initial meeting, there may be additional meetings. And that the initial meeting is one, just for hearing. Testimony, hearing testimony. We're not going to review item by item through an entire ordinance. People will be allowed to testify as they see fit. Number two, whether we're going to limit the time. And then if we limit the time, whether anyone's allowed to speak again. And Robert's rule says the mo- the most you can have is half of the posted time. So that's what we need to discuss and do right now, and Brittany needs that so that she can advertise, uh, the meeting. So the floor is open for discussion. I suggest we accept her date right away for the first meeting.
Well, the thirteenth is a regularly, regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. That's a Monday. Um, so I would do it, I would recommend that it's later in the afternoon, only because it'll give people, you know, that work during the day. Time to come in. And later in the afternoon, normally our special meetings, um, we like to have them later in the afternoon, just so. It can accommodate where.
We usually limit it, like, we do it from like four to six. We limit the time, so just in case.
I agree with Deb. I've sat through a lot of those meetings. After two hours in, in open, uh, testimony type meetings. Uh, it gets very difficult for the folks out in the audience, as well as the people that are supposed to be reviewing the testimony. I would say we should limit it to a time, and if it has to be continued to another meeting, we do that. I agree with Deb.
My preference would be late in the day and limited time.
We, recently, we've been getting a lot of feedback from, uh, the constituents that get involved in these meetings. That that four to six time seems to be a real acceptable time right now. Versus making it seven to nine or three to five. So that's, I'm putting my two cents in here because I've sat on a lot of them. Go ahead.
And Chairman, with the new hours of the building, you know, being open till six, there isn't any additional security requirements or, you know. The doors won't be shut. They'll be open to the public during that four to six time.
Okay.
Well, we can't, we can't do it on the fourteenth because that's Valentine's Day.
No one would love us, would they?
Nobody's going to come here and show us the love.
And the thirteenth, is that what you were thinking?
Well, that's a Monday, um, probably, probably not the Tuesday, what, maybe Wednesday or Thursday. From four to six.
I like the Monday.
Or Monday if everyone's already knows that that's a planning commission day, but.
We're already committed to that day. Why not just commit for the whole day, I guess is my feeling.
Cause I got work to do in between.
Well, yeah. I mean, if we hold you till one anyway, and then we, we tell you to come back at four, that could put a crutch, huh? Your popularity would wane.
So Speaker of Time, realistically, is five minutes enough? And I, I haven't been through one of these like this on lightning rod issue.
It's usually three.
Three minutes. Five minutes is a long time.
Mm-hmm.
You don't make it as until you start listening to someone talk for five minutes.
And Robert's rule says you only get half. To speak again, in case something comes up that you did want to reply or you had forgotten.
Right, and somebody else can yield.
Allowed half. If you allow them that, you do not have to allow them to speak twice.
So sometimes you can yield, well, you can yield your time, like if there's four of us that want to give you our time. For the three minutes, you can speak longer, so people can yield their time to you as well as if they have a representative or they all want to say kind of the same thing.
I'm going to have you vote on these anyway, as the, before we put a motion together, we'll just quick get a straw vote so we can at least make a motion.
I'd prefer Wednesday to Monday, but I, I can make either one work.
So let's go through the date. Do we want the thirteenth or the fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
That's two fifteens.
Fifteenth.
Okay, sounds like the fifteenth is going to be the date. Now, the time allotted for speaking.
Four to six.
Three minutes.
Four to six. Three?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. All right. I'd be more inclined to make it five, but that's all right. And then not combined time, but. Okay.
Which I think is probably.
Which I was going to bring up in our deal that they can submit them to us. Okay? On the day they come to talk to us.
I mean, it's usually more productive anyway because it gives you guys time.
Chance to look at them.
Instead of listening to somebody talk personally.
How many want to go three and you can go combine time?
Well, let's do it.
Okay. That's enough to pass it. All right. Three minutes and they're allowed to combine time. Now, the hour. We spoke about four to six.
Four to six is fine.
Is that acceptable to everyone? Will that work? We probably stick you in a little bind there, Kevin, but it does look like that one's. And that has been citizen wise, we get a lot of good comments about the four to six. And then the last thing then would be that we want to make it clear in the advertisement, this is for testimony. On this ordinance. We haven't looked at it either. We haven't decided anything. And I think that's wise. I think how it's been handled is excellent. We shouldn't be talking about it yet until we hear from the citizens. And then the last thing being, uh. I can just remind me of that. Oh, the papers. If you do, that you, if you have something that's lengthy, uh, submit it, uh, when you come to testify. In writing, turn it in.
As soon ahead of time as.
As possible, yes, AV or something. Okay.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, and Chairman, what I'll probably do is work with the commission office too and probably do a press release with some of this information in. So there's additional information in addition to the hearing, just because of the. The potential contentiousness and the amount of information that we've received in the past. When we've done ordinance amendments, um, so that way we can be clearer on our procedure.
Okay. So the motion's going to be. One, the meeting date is the fifteenth. We're going to meet four to six. And it's certainly here, you're going to publish here. Um, it's for testimony only. And what do we, uh, the length of time speaking is three minutes.
And you're allowed to defer.
You're allowed to what?
You're allowed to defer your time to others.
Defer your time to others.
And any testimony or written.
Oh, yes, that one.
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
I may do like twenty-four or forty-eight hours at least before the meeting to get into this group.
The chair seldom makes a motion, but since I was on this committee, that's my motion.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carried. And then you will take care for us of the publication. And any questions, you're going to list your number to call in advance if there's questions.
Right.
Thank you. All right. Now we're in executive session. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to, uh, go to executive session for the time. Uh, discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carried. We're now in executive session. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order again. Uh, we need a motion, uh, to, uh, come out of executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, come out of executive session. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. No actions were taken or motions made in the executive session, just for the record. Go ahead, Brittany.
Okay, item twenty is the county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, um, meeting.
All right. That was nice to read that they actually went along with this again, huh? It's easier for typing. All right, items from the public, we've totally pushed all them off. Items from the staff.
We just have the final building permit report for twenty twenty-two. Um, it was down from twenty twenty-one. Um, twenty twenty-one obviously was a record year for our office. As far as the number of permits and the number of single family residences, uh, in the county. But we're still higher on average than we have been the last five years, um, prior to twenty twenty-one. We did collect, um, we did over collect about four hundred ninety thousand dollars in building permit fees this year, so. Um, mainly because we had the large solar farm, um, that obtained building permits, so it's south of New Underwood. So that was. Nice.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Items from the membership. I've only got one and you can see that that's the way I am. I've got a job to do. I like you all. And Deb, I particularly like her. And except, except Karen brought it up, and that's a good point. She'd like to kick me right in the butt too. There, even though I like you, I can take exception with you and, and point out something that I don't think is right in public view. And then the other thing is, is I know, uh, and you guys may not be aware of this, but the public meeting laws are very stiff. The more we ask for, uh, testimony from these folks in the audience, because we were, require this speaker request form, the better off we are. People could take the position and have with the elected commissioners that we didn't allow them to speak when they were there. Or they didn't know how to speak and get up and do it. We can't do that. That just creates more confusion for the overall operation of the planning department. So I, I'll do that and, and I know it seems redundant. And you don't think that I don't get a headache when I ask them whether it, you know, more and more, especially people that want to do this on a regular basis. So I'll do it if I have to. Thank you. Motion adjourned?
Um, here. Something.
All right. Motion adjourned and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Item from the membership.
Oh. We had another item? I'm sorry. Well, then the motion to adjourn isn't going to pass.
So, uh, we got the development guide in our last packet and I, um, is this the right place to give a suggestion?
Sure.
Um. Right, i- in your, uh, right after introduction, I would really recommend that you add a definition of terms. So a lot of people don't understand what a planned unit development is or, you know, what different zoning things are. So a lot of those common terms that go through this, if this is being given to the public to know what it is they need to do to develop their property. A definition of those terms would be highly, um, beneficial for those people in this, in this packet. And then the only other thing I noted was on page ten. Um, you talk about common, you know, services of the planning department. These all fall within county limits. So you might just put something in there that, um, other jurisdictions that have authority. You know, these is outside of those city or other jurisdictions that have authority. Just so people understand that if they're in the city limits, they go to the city. And you're not getting inundated with people coming to you and saying, I want to do this. And you say, well, that's actually city. You need to go over there.
Okay, this was our first, um, attempt at, you know, trying to work, give something to the public. Because I know we, we try to meet with the public on a regular basis. Um, typically we try to do one-on-ones, um, with someone prior to them even submitting or being in front of the planning commission. Um, it goes more smoothly, um, as you've seen with the last PUD amendment, you know, with Mr. Allard. You know, there was a lot of meetings and a lot of site visits and things prior to it even coming in front. So we're trying to get to that point. Um, I know that there's people that don't live here, so the intent was that it was just understanding that it is a long process and it is, there's quite a few steps. Um, and it just gives people kind of a guide to understand that.
Yeah, I think it was a really good guide. I really liked the flow charts.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that, that was some thought because you, and that really helps give that visual, um, you know, easy visual understanding of how things go. And if what one thing leads to another, it all works out really well. So those two little suggestions were the only thing I had through the whole packet. Other than that, I thought it was really good.
All right.
All right, and I'm going to, Brittany, but I would, Megan's not here. I got to stick up. I would not include anything on definitions that isn't already in our zoning ordinance. Because we're just muddying up the water and we do have a number of them defined, but you might want to refer to the section.
Right.
I'd stay away from any new ones.
No, we, we would pull them. We do that. We cross reference, so we don't.
Anything else on that? And I apologize, I didn't hear you. I thought you made the motion, so I wasn't here.
No, sir, but I'll make the motion now, I move to adjourn.
Go right ahead, Neil.